Let's go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Destin City Council, January 21st, 2020, to order. Tonight, we don't have a pastor, so what we'll do is we'll have council member Overdeer lead us into pleasurable allegiance. Would everyone please stand? Tonight, for the agenda approval, I have been told that we've got a couple changes tonight. Kyle, I want to start with you, or Mr. Morgan?
So, I would like to add, under my name, nominating James Gevdon to the LPA, and Ray's going to get a copy of his resume for all the council members.
I got one.
And I would also like to move item G1 to 4A. It's a food-for-thought lease.
All right. Mr. Morgan would like to move item G1 to item 4A, and...
I have something there.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move 7J2 to under 4.
4B?
Yes, sir.
We'll put that at 4B. Everything under 4 presently now will just go down a letter. Any other changes?
7J.
That's it? All right?
7J2.
Yes. I got it. So, all right, so those will be the only changes?
Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
I got a motion, got a second? Give me a little button here. Seeing no further discussion? Vote unanimous, so moved. Item 1A, approval of minutes on November 4th, 2019, regular city council meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second? Is there any discussion? Vote unanimous, so moved. All right, tonight, under 2A, we have Parks and Recreation Committee presentation of fiscal year 2019 accomplishments and fiscal year 2020 work plans. Ms. Teresa A. Bear, who is the chairwoman of the recreational board, is to give that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me present tonight what we did last year for 2019. For Arbor Day ceremony, the city's annual Arbor Day is always held in April this year. This past year, it was April 26th at the Nancy Wiethenheimer's Dog Park. Mayor Gary Jarvis presented with Councilman Skip Overdeer in attendance, and the city celebrated the planting of a southern magnolia in the small dog park. Committee member Myra Williams gave a short presentation, and children from Noah's Ark Preschool participated in this high-profile event. The Parks team also planted another magnolia tree in the large dog park at the same time. So, it was very productive. We were able to put in two really beautiful trees on that day. In park inspections, all the parks and beach trails were inspected by committee members, and the findings were reported to the department director and park supervisor in a late winter meeting of the committee. The majority of the items of concern that were identified had been corrected. Everything from piers that were changed out, boards, we had a lot of beach areas that needed new trash cans, some of the toilets, some of the sinks, some of the soap dispensers, just a lot of minor things that deteriorate slowly over the year, but they were able to, the committee was present what needed to be done, and we were able to help the city get it approved through council to approve the funding to get everything fixed. So, everything looks great. We did the Welcome to Destin sign beautification project we put together with Alan French, based of the Destin Trees on the Coast staff, to shepherd along a proposal to beautify the popular Welcome to Destin, the world's luckiest fishing village signed by the Marler Bridge on Eglin Air Force Base property. The proposal would enhance the attractiveness of the sign with landscaping and the planting of trees, and we were able to get some donation from Delta Pavers. They'll do the paving around the sign. However, as it is an Eglin property, it does take a little bit of time to go through the process of what is authorized, what can be done, how far out it can be built, and what exactly needs to be done. Since we can't run lines for any kind of watering system, we want to make sure that we set it up to where we put plants in there that are self-sustaining so that they're planted in the springtime. We get a water truck in there, get them wet, get them through the first couple of months, and then from there, they'll live through the summer and winter months because they're the type of plants that we want to make sure that survive in this weather. Civic involvement, committee members were active in a variety of local annual civic events, including the Fall Festival, Founder's Day, the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony, the Pin Fish Tournament, and the Christmas Outdoor Decorating Contest. The members of the team basically play judges or volunteers at all the events throughout the year that we try and put on from Parks and Recreation in conjunction with the city employees as well. And then, the annual Christmas parade, the committee constructed and entered afloat, celebrating the Nancy Wiethenheimer Dog Park into the annual Christmas parade. And I'd like to recognize Nikki on our team. She was the one that had that idea. Nikki, if you'd like to stand up. And Matthew is also, he's one of our members, he's here tonight, and so is Myra. So, with that, that is all I have. If you have any questions, I can entertain those now. Otherwise, that's our report. That's it?
Great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. And up next is the Destin Community Event Center Project. I think Mr. Patel was not able to attend, so we have some other spokespeople that will catch that for you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patel sends his apologies. He's tied up in a meeting in Tampa today and couldn't get away with it. It's actually a hotel project he's a general contractor on, and it's an inspection that ran later, and so he expresses his apologies for not being... My name is Rick Kozback. I'm the president of International Colosseums Company. We're one of the partners in the development team that we put together for a project several years ago in Pensacola, Escambia County, and are working together on a variety of other projects. We, first of all, want to thank Ms. Peggy Vincent for bringing this opportunity, potential opportunity, to us and introducing us to the city of Destin. I think you might have heard us make an introduction to your session that you had in November. We were first here, I think, in November when you had a session at your community complex. So, we're really happy to be here, and I'm going to try to make this work. It does work. Oh, goodness. It's just hard for me to see where I'm at and what we're doing, but I think what we wanted to do today is just give you an overview of what we do as a company and what kinds of projects we do to community, work with communities such as yourselves. Not really sure what things that you might be looking at in the way of physical, sport, recreation, culture kinds of projects, but give you some overview about, these are fieldhouses, these are convention-type facilities, these are ice rinks, these are combinations, these are event centers, things that we've done in the past, something that we were doing in Pensacola or hope to be doing in Pensacola by the end of this calendar year, but just to give you some idea about a general overview of different types of projects, and then see if there's some interest from your perspective to look further. Our team is made up, we're a P3 development company, so private, public-private partnership. Our lead is a group called the Hunt Group out of El Paso, Texas, actually. The New York firm does the bulk of the financing, but Hunt is our P3 lender, and we participate with them in numerous other projects. ICC, International Colosseums, is our company. Dave McPherson is our rep here and business development person here in the southeast. We're in the design development of multi-use facilities primarily for sport, recreation, and culture. Core Construction is our builder. So, as we put together our design-build-maintain program, Core is our team member that does construction work and does construction work for us in several other projects. We've actually just done two with them here recently. Perkins &amp; Will, a national architectural firm, we've worked with Perkins &amp; Will for 18 years and pretty much are exclusive with them. And our parking consultants, Greg Darden, I think you know Greg, has been with you on several other projects. Greg works closely with us on maintaining and managing our parking traffic solutions on projects that come up, such as this, because there is obviously a parking and a traffic issue. Anytime you decide, you're going to look at a sport-recreation-type building. In throwing out just conceptual ideas, we looked at some basic ideas, and we're taking some of these ideas from other projects. A project that maybe is of interest is an 80,000-plus-or-minus-square-foot fieldhouse. And traditionally, what a fieldhouse would be, it would be a gymnasium-type facility, multiple courts, that is good for the local community, good for high schools, good for youth programs, but also flexes itself to do a variety of other things. It could be a small conference space, it could be a trade show space, it most certainly could be a sports-tourism facility. I think you're all familiar with what Panama City Beach has been able to accomplish, whether outdoor fields, similarly with an indoor space, you could do something similar. But primarily, it thinks of itself as a local community investment first, and then it could morph itself into a variety of other endeavors. To look at ice hockey and ice hockey facilities, I know that that came up as a discussion point, so Peggy said, make sure that you talk about that in your discussion. We're hockey guys. I'm a Canadian by birth, US citizen now, but hockey is our DNA, so we're very familiar with what it takes to put together hockey facilities. A simple, small-scale facility takes about 60,000 square feet. Florida is just, at this point, booming as far as the hockey culture is concerned, believe it or not. In fact, the whole United States hockey culture has grown dramatically in the last 15 to 20 years. We think of places like this, whatever it might be, that there should be an incorporation of some community aspect. In Pensacola, the project that we have been proposing to the Escambia County will include a sports Hall of Fame. So, when you design a facility like this, it's good to think, how many other activities can we center into one building? So, we thought, let's throw out the idea of a sports Hall of Fame here for the city of Destin. This kind of a facility, if it's a fieldhouse or if it's a combination facility, would replace your existing community center. Would have meeting rooms, would have offices, so it could be a new space that kind of creates itself into a different light. Most certainly, there has to be a gathering space, some kind of a pedestrian plaza that allows people to gather, whether that's something where you now do your Christmas Tree Lighting, whether it's a certain space that you do, local festivals or functions, it all could be centered around this one common theme area. Parking's always a concern, and parking most certainly is important in these kinds of facilities. Access, egress, frustration for people who can't get in and can't get out. So, we always think about parking when we do something like this. Other ancillaries, a hotel. More hotels probably come along the way when these kinds of facilities get developed. And what does it take? It usually takes at least a 10-acre site to do anything of any substance. So, going to give you just a quick overview. Fieldhouses, primarily, as I said, they're indoor spaces, hardwood floors, designed to be large-scale gymnasiums with multiple courts and all kinds of other things that could go on in there with them. This is in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. This, it's hard to see, but basically, there's a number of basketball courts to the left. I think this is the thing. So, on the left-hand side, a number of basketball courts. On the right-hand side, still in the same building, is a large spectator-space facility. So, this could be, in this case, a one-basketball facility, or it could be a concert facility. This is another one in Rockford, Illinois. Basically, a larger fieldhouse space, again, primarily catering itself to volleyball, high school volleyball, club volleyball, basketball, cheerleading, wrestling, multiple courts, all that are flexible enough to do other activities as well. Another one here is in Williston, North Dakota. This is kind of a little bit more of a monster-type fieldhouse building because it involves, in Williston, everything really needs to be indoors. So, this has an indoor surface, turf surface. It has multiple activity courts for volleyball, basketball, indoor tennis, also has swimming. So, again, a fieldhouse could be any different number of descriptions, all under one roof, some type of indoor venue. One in Jacksonville, Florida, that was positioned, not constructed, similar, has some indoor spaces, has indoor roof spaces with turf, meeting rooms, some gymnastics areas, again, an indoor space that could be a variety of different activities. This is one we just finished with Core Construction in May. It opened up in May of this year, and it's a high school district. So, the Colorado River Union High School District floated a bond issue for about a $36 million indoor fieldhouse project. And so, the school district owns the building. It's a large 125,000-square-foot fieldhouse owned and operated by the school district. So, it first and foremost caters to the schools, secondly, to the community, and then it opens itself up for commercial enterprise. So, in this case, we have about 4,500 fixed seats in this indoor stadium. First of all, it's high school football. So, the district has two teams, two high schools, so they play their home games inside a facility that seats 4,500. Then, when the football season is over, we lay down a white surface here, which is a hardwood surface. It will actually covers, right now, it covers the whole football field, and we have eight basketball courts on it. In this case, kind of the uniqueness of it is we bought eight portable basketball floors. So, one of them says University of Syracuse, one is Texas Tech University, one is University of Nevada Reno. So, when the kids are playing on the surfaces, it's kind of a neat feeling that you're in this indoor space, it's owned by a school district, but you're playing on a university field or university's court. So, neat building. Again, school district, it's a fieldhouse, but multi-use fieldhouse. And these are just some examples of what an actual fieldhouse does. These are the sports and how the same building, one of the same buildings, could be converted into multiple uses, from conventions and trade shows, through volleyball, basketball, wrestling, to small concerts. Ice rinks. Not exactly sure everything that the community might want or want to look at, so we threw out some examples. This is city of Lethbridge, Alberta. It's a twin-ice purpose facility. Two ice surfaces. Most often, we wouldn't even recommend that you build anything less than two ice surfaces because of the growing nature of the sport, but it just shows how the ice surfaces butt beside each other. Dressing rooms, locker rooms are in the middle. Usually, there's an upstairs mezzanine area, offices, meeting rooms, conference spaces, but it's a twin-ice hockey facility. Seating is probably 1,000 people. It's mostly sport/recreation for the locals. You're doing something that's going to be quality of life for the people who live in your community, and if there's an opportunity to commercialize it later by bringing tournament teams in for sports tourism, by all means, the space allows itself to do that. This is a little bit different twin pad. This is kind of what we call a flex space in that it's Spruce Grove, Alberta, which is a city just outside of Edmonton. The city is about 45,000. Actually, it's an area where I grew up. This building is quite unique in that it, I don't know if you can see my pointer when I go up there, but it has a hotel conference center attached to it. So, on the left-hand side is the hotel conference center. The conference rooms are in the bottom here. Then, the large space is the large arena of about 3,500 fixed seats. At the back of this is the second ice rink. So, if you remember the twin pad that I showed you from the Lepreys facility, you had ice rinks going side by side. This has them going in a longitudinal fashion. And then, in the middle is something we call a black box theater, and it's about a 4,000-square-foot space. It is a performing arts facility for the community, for the local high schools, but also can flex and do just about anything you want. The seats retract, so it can be a gymnastics space, boys' and girls' club, variety of different things. And this is built within a 62-acre mixed-use commercial development. The rest of the development sits on the left-hand side, and it's completely developed. This is the last piece of this 62-acre development. So, it's a twin pad, but a twin pad that has seats, so it can do concerts, it can do trade shows. It's attached to a conference center, it's attached to a second ice rink, which is a community-use space, and it all sits inside this mixed-use development. This just gives a little bit of a look. There's an upstairs balcony area that overlooks the building. So, this is the second floor of the building where the luxury suites would be, and it overlooks the inside of the arena for concerts and hockey games, and then looks out onto the development as a summer patio area. This is a project we were doing in Idaho Falls, Idaho. It's another twin pad facility, really a unique design. The architects, I think, got carried away with trying to understand the architecture of the neighborhoods, but it's a very neat design, very expensive design, and because of the size of the property, the ice rinks sit in a different fashion. So, they are sitting in what we call more of a linear look than they are side by side. So, this takes less space as far as a twin pad is concerned, but accommodates everything that we would want to on any of them. This is a project in Utica, New York. Again, very similar, except this one has three rinks side by side. And at any given time, if you're looking at ice rink complexes, one ice rink could be used for hockey, one could be used for skating, one could be used for adult hockey tournaments, or you could have one for hockey and two for field sports. So, if there isn't a demand for the hockey in the community, then maybe one is indoor soccer, maybe one is indoor lacrosse, maybe it's some other sport, but it's not necessarily something you have to always adapt itself to hockey. This is Greeley, Colorado. Started out as a one-rink facility, and this is the original one, and then about two years ago, a second ice rink was added on to it. Again, this is similar to what we talked about in the project that we have in Lethbridge, Alberta. Two ice surfaces side by side, locker rooms in the middle. Beautiful project up in Breckenridge, Colorado. Looks great in the architecture that's there. Again, a twin pad. One was built first, and about five years ago, the second ice rink was added to it. Now, this one is kind of a granddaddy because it involves everything under one roof. It's in Littleton, Colorado, and it basically takes field sports, indoor courts, meeting rooms, gymnastics rooms, and ice hockey, and puts it all under one roof. So, this slide now shows three ice rinks in addition to all the other complexes that were involved, from field sports to court sports to offices, meetings, and recreational Now, this is what we had proposed and still have as a proposition for Escambia County folks in Pensacola. We have positioned a new event center, a smaller event center of 6,500 seats here. A plaza area in the middle, a festival space, we call it, in the middle of the two, and the fieldhouse of about 100,000 square feet sits on this here far-left-hand side. This area where our parking garages are and this mixed commercial, that's where the old base center would be. So, currently, the base center sits here. This space is, in essence, parking. Our plan is to remove the base center. Once this building gets completed and this building gets completed, then the parking lot will take place here, commercial development here, potentially another hotel, all sitting on the same site. So, it's a fieldhouse, it's an event center with a second ice rink attached to it. And in the cases of Escambia County, they wanted to know some relative cost numbers. So, if we wanted the fieldhouse and we wanted a new event center, what are we looking at in the way of a cost? And in our estimation, we're saying the fieldhouse, indoor space, depending on the square footage of it, whether it's 80,000 to 100,000 square feet, somewhere between 17 and 25 million. And this large building, which is really, from our perspective, this building sits right now in Allen, Texas, which is just outside the city limits of Dallas. It's a 6,500-seat facility, fixed-seat facility, 8,000 for concerts, has a second ice rink attached to it, and it has a professional hockey team that plays in it. So, that building is kind of, in our world, a Cadillac, one of the nicer buildings that we've done, and it's about, in today's dollars, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 65 million. So, Escambia County launched some studies of their own, which would be part and parcel, I'm sure, what any decision that gets made would have to take. They wanted to know what a fieldhouse would generate in the way of activity. So, they hired a firm called Crossroads out of Tampa Bay. Crossroads did the feasibility study to know, to give them some idea of what's the value? If we were to do this, what does it mean to us, and what does it mean to our community? And the study came back with a direct economic impact of somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 28 million dollars, indirect and induced accordingly. But what Escambia County wanted to know is, if we build it, will our merchants be happy? Will our hotel rooms go up, and will it, in fact, do something that we don't have in our community? And I think that the overarching answer was yes, and I think that study has confirmed that if you build it and they do come, in all likelihood, your hotel occupancy rates go up, employment numbers do go up, and the quality of life for your constituents should be on the rise. This is a study of just the ice rinks. They also wanted to know, okay, if you build an event center for concerts and trade shows and things that the local community would want, so they don't have to get in their cars and drive somewhere else, what is that? Well, we had a group out of Chicago called the Hunt and Strategic Partners do a study for us in Racine, Wisconsin, and so all we could tell the local folks in Escambia County was, here's a study that was done by an independent third party, and it said, if you have an indoor event center facility, these are the kinds of economic impact numbers that you could see for that facility. Outside of the fieldhouse, this is basically your event center. And then, similarly, the city of Allen did a study five years after the building was open to determine, has this really been beneficial to us? If we were to do it again, would we? And in fact, they said, yes, we would do it again. The value of the project to them was approximately 13 million dollars a year in economic value. So, we would show those to you just as an example of what was asked of us before in a different project, and some of the things that we knew we had to address in Escambia County. So, I mean, at this point, we just wanted to give you kind of that broad stroke. These are the kinds of things that a lot of communities such as yourself start thinking about with regards to their constituents, their quality of life, and in some cases, what does it mean for an economic value to our community? So, we're only going to give you that, here's the kinds of things that we deal in, the kinds of projects that we've done in the past, and the kinds of things that maybe you are already looking at or want to look at, and we're happy to help guide in that direction if that's the direction you want to go. So, from my perspective, I just wanted to give you this canvas and say, here's a variety of different product types. These are the kinds of things we do as a team. Here's some of the ones that we've done in the past. Some of it may make sense and be of interest to you, others may not be, but if there's something that gathered your interest, we're happy to try to take now and help formulate a little bit of a plan to go forward to see what it is, do we want to do it, and how do we do it? So, that's our spiel. I know I was limited to a certain amount of time. I hope I didn't go over. I know you've got a long agenda, so... These next steps are things that you can have a look at. It really depends on you as a council, and if you want to take a next step and look at, how do we do something? We first of all have to decide what it is, what's the concept that we want to explore, and then, as I said earlier, how do we put the pieces together to see if we get there? And if we can't get there, no problem. If we can get there, we continue to work together to see if this is something that makes sense for you folks here in the city of Destin. Any questions?
Anybody have some questions? I think you've got a few questions coming up. Go ahead.
Okay, so we've already got the Oakaloosa County Convention Center out there. So, how would this complement that? I mean, because this sounds like this is more sports-oriented, although it does, you did talk a little bit about concerts, and you did talk a little bit about meetings and things like that. So, are we going to be taking business away from them, or is this going to be in addition to what they're...
I think this would be synergistic. This is not a convention. These are, what we're showing are not convention centers, they're event centers. So, those events would be sports, it would be concerts, most certainly, it would be locally-produced events, it would be high school graduations, it would be convocations. In some places, we do midnight mass services, we do an Easter service, non-denominational. It's those kinds of things, but it's not set up to be a conference center. The project in Allen has a Marriott Hotel beside it with 20,000 square feet of conference room space attached to it, and what happens in Allen is we co-opt. So, they'll be hosting some sort of a convention at the hotel, and they'll use our floor space for trade shows, they may use the floor space for their opening ceremony. So, if it's a speaking engagement of 1,000 people, they'll... So if it's a speaking engagement of a thousand people, they'll put a thousand people on the floor, a stage at one end, they'll use that for the introduction, maybe clean it off, and then we could feed everybody on the floor, in that kind of... So most often, things would work synergistically, it wouldn't be, this wouldn't be a conference center. What we're talking about, none of these would be a conference center.
Okay, the only other thing I had was, the ten acres, does that include the parking area? And where in Destin is there ten acres that you, have you looked for a site that would accept something like this?
I believe there was a site that was referred to us, it's probably big enough for the facilities, but the questionable parking, no. In most cases, you know, when I said the ten acres, that's the two buildings with really what we consider to be minimal parking. If you put an event center in a piece of property, you know, parking codes usually are about three to one, which means for a four thousand-seat facility, you probably need twelve to thirteen hundred parking spaces. Generally, we like to spread the parking out. And if you think about Escambia County, when you go to the base center, if you've gone to any event, there's not much parking right at the site. You're asked to park in different places, and the reasoning for that, in a lot of cases, so you'll have a meal over here, and you'll walk to the facility, and you'll go back and have a drink after the event is over. So you spread out the wealth. So we wouldn't ever recommend that you specifically park the entire project on one site, but rather, and that's where Greg's expertise comes, and spread that parking around the community so that there's pockets of benefit that come. And then when an event is over, it's a lot better when people walk to where their cars are, as opposed to all of you being in one spot. Now we've all got to leave together, and now we have a problem.
Ms. Ramswell?
Thanks for coming and sharing your vision. So I have a few questions. My first question actually builds on what Councilman Overdeer brought up, and that is, I know the convention center has a difficult time making ends meet, and they've brought in some questionable acts to try to bring some money in. My concern, and as a businessman, how do you foresee an area as small as Destin bringing in people, enough people, to fully financially support your idea?
Well, first of all, it's dependent on what it is that you actually develop, right? So we're at the point of just guessing, right? Just throwing out ideas. So there's nothing concrete as to what it is. I guess I would go back to that ten-acre site, saying the ten acres means we would actually be doing a fieldhouse and some type of an event center arena together. But if you decided, you know what, what we really need is just one of these, and here's what it is, then we've got to kind of formulate what that is. From the perspective of any of these facilities, I think the primary interest is to take care of the people who live here first. So we always build these, you have to build them for the quality of life of the people who are here. Then the business model says, once we've taken care of those, what are the other events that we could bring in that would make this at least break even? The ultimate goal of any of these kind of projects is, we've got to get to a break-even point. And to think that we're going to make huge profits beyond that, probably not really realistic. The benefit oftentimes comes within the community itself, the hotels and the restaurants that benefit. But our goal is to make sure we get to a break-even. And it's not easy. I'm not going, I would never, it's not easy.
So in your projections or in your studies that you've done, you know, to look at this, what is it that you feel, what sports or what combination of facilities do you feel, based on your research, actually would be supported here?
Well, we would think that a mid-sized event center makes sense. And the reason is because there's nothing in that mid-sized category for quite a distance. Again, whatever happens in Escambia County happens, or doesn't happen, I'm not sure. But really, if you look at an indoor facility that would seat four or five thousand, probably there isn't something that really we think competes when it's a new facility in a new market. Again, site-specific is important, too, but we think that's primarily the focus. Now, not discounting the indoor fieldhouse-type product, because today's sports tourism business, in addition to what you would want this for with your high school kids and local sports programs, sports tourism, basketball, volleyball, wrestling, cheerleading is a massive industry right now, and not going to go away anytime soon. Parents will come. We had an event in Southern California over Thanksgiving where there were four hundred and forty soccer teams for a Thanksgiving Day tournament, weekend. So four hundred and forty times at least ten kids, times how many parents, that's a huge deal. So sports tourism is moving. There's no real indoor facility here. I know Panama City Beach have talked about trying to do an indoor to complement their outdoor, but there isn't one. So Foley has one that's probably now a little bit smaller than they wished they would have. So that also is something that kind of sits in that to be considered. So we haven't made any decisions at all, we're just, these are the things that are out there. We think the market is a good one for something like this, but we also don't want to push, we want to work together to see what might be the most beneficial for the area.
So my concern would be, we already have a major traffic situation, particularly right where the community center is. And I can't imagine that there was enough infrastructure that could be built to be supported in that one section. And then I think about the size of that property, and then you think about parking. But where I'm headed with this is, and I'm sure Gary's already knowing where I'm headed, I'm part of Destin High School, and the council, you know, helped us put together a committee to start a high school here in Destin. And one of the people we've been working with is the owner of the twenty acres, including old-time pottery. That is twenty acres, and you've got Main Street there, so another sort of major road. That might be an opportunity in a much larger space for something like that, and I could see some sort of partnership between the city to have maybe indoor soccer field or something. I know soccer's hugely popular, and they've done a terrific job of bringing in a ton of tournaments. And then obviously, something to help support a high, like a football team, or some, I can see how that might be a great partnership to help build a sports center that would help our city and the high school.
Well, I mean, when you brought that up, the project I showed you in Bullhead City, Arizona, is a joint partnership between the city of Bullhead City and Colorado River Union High School District, for the same reason. It's in between the two high schools, so it sits on Highway ninety-five, which is a state highway, in between two high schools, but it's used by, used by the high schools first, and then it's used by the City Parks and Recreation Program second. And that is kind of how this thing, that's how the bonds were sold. I think if they would have gone out and tried to sell the thirty-six million dollar bond issuance, just on the fact that it was going to be just for the schools, it wouldn't have flown. So together, they put it together, saying, city's going to do this, school district's going to do this, this is how this might work. So I think most certainly, joint venture, even to the county level in some cases, putting together a program that says it's county, school, city, could help.
And just to let you know, the Pottery Barn location is exactly what we have in mind here.
Yeah, I figured there was no other location that large.
Well, that's the only location to offer you all the opportunities to have a wider variety of options as well, whatever we would decide. You know, you're not limited by property size going down that route. Mr. Brayden and Mr. Morgan, when you're done, probably, if you have some more questions, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I am very intrigued by this, and if it's something the council is not interested in pursuing as part of a city project, I would be most interested in speaking with you about pursuing it as part of a school-county-type project. And I am personal friends with the owner of that center, so...
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have the same concerns that some of the council members have, is I know the convention center, we have six miles of here, you know, can hold a lot of the events and that you talked about earlier. And I believe that that convention center is actually, you know, dying of a slow, horrible death. So I don't know, something like this would be amazing, but I don't know, this is for Destin. I think Destin would be more like an aquarium would suit us better. I just don't know.
Well, I mean, I never, I never, ever second-guess anybody's opinion. Years ago, we approached the city of Dodge City, Kansas, with this idea of an arena. Dodge City sits, if you know where it is, it's home of Wyatt Earp, but it sits in the middle really of nowhere. You are in Kansas, and you're three hours to Wichita, six hours to Denver, about four and a half hours to Oklahoma City, even further to Amarillo. And their council became intrigued with just the idea of, why not Dodge? So they had a campaign that went out to the voters in the county, that why not Dodge? That was their selling feature. Why can't we have something? And it wasn't easy. From the day that it started till the day we built the building was almost ten years. But it was a concept that said, well, why does Wichita get everything? Why does Hutchison, Kansas have, why does Salina have a building? They're not that much bigger than us. And they garnered the support of the community to the point where they've got a facility that now, last year, it has a small conference center attached to it, the other piece has a casino, so it helps a little bit. But they had three hundred and ninety event days a year booked in that little facility. Now, that meant that multiple events were going on at the same time, so various meetings and conferences were going on at the same time, as there might have been a hockey game going on inside the building. But the point is, they made a commitment, why not us? Struggled hard to get it done, waited until they had enough money collected out of their sales tax, which is a quarter percent sales tax increase, took a while, and then they decided to go forward. So I would just say that it's, you know, when you get to the point of thinking, what is it that we could have here? It's time when you get together, we all would get together, and let's figure this out. Let's do stakeholder meetings, let's do some informative sessions and involve the community and involve folks who may have an interest we don't know about, collect those ideas, and see what comes out of it. So throw everything into the pot, stir it up, see what happens, and then decide or not decide. But I think you should never undersell your community, because you could get it if there's an interest that really piques everybody's interest, I guess.
Mr. Morgan? Are you done, Rodney?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I think, Rodney, you mentioned about the convention center dying a slow death, but what's preventing that from happening is they've got this gigantic pot of TDC money that's able to subsidize it and keep it going, so it can legitimately lose a million, two million dollars a year, and they're able to keep the doors open and justify the economic impact it has. The concern I would have on the city of Destin is we don't have that pot of money, you know, discretionary funds to subsidize a center that doesn't, you know, and the economic impact is great, you know, and we have outdoor fields and a lot of tournaments, and we see that economic impact. And, you know, the Morgan Sports Center is a lot, it's not nearly as expensive as a fieldhouse.
Sure, oh, I understood.
On the other side, you know, I think the property that y'all had mentioned about, you know, old-time pottery, was we had a developer coming around town, you know, proposing to build two, three hundred apartment units, which is absolutely what the city doesn't need. And so something will happen with that property at some point. And the revitalization of that shopping center, I don't think is going to happen, and I think the most meaningful development we've seen in Destin are apartment complexes, and this is an alternative to that. You know, so I do think it's worth, you know, exploring and seeing if, you know, financially it would be feasible.
Sure.
You know, that would be the biggest concern. But I like the idea, it's a big idea, you know, and I think the city has, you know, a lot of issues and a lot of headwinds against us, but, you know, sometimes it takes, you know, a big break or a big idea to kind of break that momentum, and this might be it, it might not, but I think it's worth exploring.
But hopefully, it's worth going a little further and trying to figure something out.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the next steps would be, but I would support that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, Rick, I appreciate it. The only comments I got for the council is, the reason we brought Rick and his team in here, Ms. Peggy was the one that actually spurred it, she heard that I was an ice hockey player, so she says, well, how come we don't have an ice hockey rink in Destin? So then she got my attention. And then, as these guys have talked and gave us some considerations, I took a different view outside of my own selfish ones of wanting professional ice hockey or ice skating in Destin, or the kids on Eglin and Hurlbert that come from up north participating in youth hockey versus driving to Pensacola like they do now. I just felt like that, building a project like this, whatever it turns out to be, would be a gateway to our town center CRA. It fits in with our undergrounding of Highway ninety-eight and changing the appearance of ninety-eight as you drive along, because instead of the Pottery Barn and Pepito's, you would see a well-designed, thought-out facility and nice landscaping ambiance. I think it would provide a first-class facility for our residents and our kids, who are presently in a building we built thirty-two years ago now, on a small, little piece of property that's located in one of the most congested areas in our city. This would bring our town center actually in the center of our town, which is a community center in the center. It's right around the corner from our new high school. Speaking of high schools, usually high schools have wrestling, track, volleyball, football. I like to think big, I like the idea of a twin sheet ice and then being able to use it for indoor football practice and that kind of stuff. So like Mr. Morgan said, sometimes you have to think big, and money will always make us think a little smaller probably at some point, but when you do three P projects, you need to grab for the ring, the golden ring, and then let reality dictate exactly what takes place. So I think what they've done here is provided us something to talk about and maybe working with these guys. I know community outreach is big, is in the next step. So maybe we could plan a workshop here soon down the road and talk about what are the next steps, so as to help you in whatever we could.
Thank you, sir.
I just thank, I thank your presentation, and I just want to remind everybody, when we do our public comments, now that you've listened to some of these ideas, feel free to weigh in when given that opportunity, all right? Thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
All right.
Mayor, if I may, the previous presentation from the Proximacy Committee, there's actually a recommended motion, which is to approve fiscal year 2019 annual report and fiscal year 2020 work plans.
And that's for our Parks and Recreation Committee presentation? So moved. I have a motion, I have a second, and any further discussion on that? Seeing none? Thank you, Ray. It's why we pay you the big bucks. Sorry, Teresa, we forgot. See, you can see where my mind was, it was on ice hockey. Vote is unanimous, so moved. All right, well, seeing how our presentations are done, we will move right into our public comment period. I've got three cards, and I'll go through those first, and then after that, I'll look out the audience and anybody that would like to come up to the podium, and I know Ms. Peggy does, I'll recognize you one at a time, and I'll just remind everyone to just state your name and where you live, and then you'll have three minutes to make your comments. First up, and this is an agenda item on Agenda Four A, Carrie Harburger.
Hello, Carrie Harburger, Spring Lane. I guess we're going to start talking about the Eglin property, so I wanted to, I wanted to put my two cents in. Gary, may I address?
Yes. Thank you.
Those would be letters from our base commanders for Eglin and Hurlbert. I've had the contracts for nineteen years, I bid on them every three years. I'm a little salty about what's going on, I'm not going to lie. However, I've been pitching this to the city for three years now, so I'm very excited. I want us to, what was the expression you made, shoot the goal, or? We're going for under the bridge, but I want to bring something to the council's attention. Being military myself, the part of the property that has the pavilions, that has the very nice decking, that's not being utilized either. We really need to go for the whole thing. We really need to go for the whole thing because they don't man that. I've documented this now for three seasons. I have twelve thousand pictures, but I can come up with documentation. The military does three events a year for the military, aroundabout. If they don't staff that with a retired fella, I'm not sure if they're paying them now, but it normally is volunteer. They just lock it. So we've been having to pay now even as military to go in there. I'm not sure why, but we do. I walk it, there's a two hundred and forty-four parking spaces. My recommendation is they don't want that either. I'm the one who has pitched this to the city because that's ridiculous what we're going through on that, that property, on Eglin. But they don't want any of it. I've talked to Ms. Claudia, Valerie Cawthorn, and she informed me, which I'm going to officially inform you, that they fully intend on stopping the traffic from leaving up under that bridge and going to the pavilion, drive out, and so the, the people can cut across to the median and head west. They will be routing all the traffic to Destin to roundabout where you're fixing to talk about a intersection installment. That's reality. So I really want to see the city get this. I'm tired of fighting it. I've lost friends over this and I'm okay with it. I fought for this, this was my contracting. But furthermore, we need to take the pavilions. There's nice decking there, there's two bathrooms, they don't want it. My suggestion, not to take it from the military, being that there's so many parking spaces, is maybe put, if we could accumulate that as well, is maybe leaving reserved parking for military and saying we would give up those three events. When I tell you there's only three events, last year they only did two. I record, I document everything. With that being said, even if you took forty spaces, I have not yet to see forty military people just go hang out there. Even Memorial Weekend, all weekend it was locked, gatelocked, two hundred and forty-four parking spaces. They don't want it either. So let me encourage us to go for the gusto. I know my time's up, but this is pretty important to me. So let's go for the gold, as you say. And, um, that was it. If there's any questions, I'm full of, uh, answers to this property. It's been a nightmare for me. I don't lease the land, I have the rights to vend on it. I've been the only person that have had the rights to vend on it. It isn't a gift or I'm not entitled. I bid on it every three years. I pay for it every month and I insure it to the tunes of millions. I watched another business make fifteen, are you ready? Thousand dollars a day, documentably, a day. They took my business and they turned it into a parking lot. Nobody came to my defense. Nobody knows who's in charge. Nobody wants to even talk about it. The only people that did anything in code enforcement or any type of thing for the businesses that had to suffer the impact of that drama was Mr. Ford Gion. And I want to thank the city of Destin for backing your local businesses on this. But I want to encourage you to go for that property. It's well worth it. It's got two pavilions, it's got great decking, it's got bathrooms on both sides. You could even put a vendor there, but they don't want it. I promise I'd go all the time. So they can't even man it.
All right.
Okay?
Okay. Well, and you'll have another opportunity to talk about it after we talk about it.
I'm not sure, I don't feel real good, but I don't, do you need that? I just wanted to. Some people were a little questioned, like, why am, why am I always in that? Because it's my lease.
Uh, get a copy of this to Ray.
Yeah, those are from the commanders.
Get a copy of this, Ray, so he can scan it and send it to all the council members so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, and I, yeah, appreciate y'all just to keep the lease under, or the.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, next, I got two yellow cards, then I'll check out the audience. First up, Karen Lugo. After that'll be Jonathan Charisma. I hope I didn't butcher your name, Jonathan.
Karen Lugo, one hundred Sandprint Circle. I'm here tonight about a question of short-term rentals and equal treatment. The city of Destin has been very active in regulating, um, short-term rentals over the last year and a half. As most of us know, today is the deadline for turning in Burt Harris claims for those people that, uh, were interested in preserving occupancy or, or negotiating a settlement with the city. But over the last year and a half, between the new rules, the new fees, the higher fees, the new regimes on parking, uh, it has been a matter of listening to hours and hours and weeks and days of, of short-term rental, uh, conversation for the task force as well as city council meetings, but always trying to figure out how to respond. And at this point, understanding that the city has the regulatory power that they do under the licensing authority that the city has, and many STR owners have had the question, if we are regulated and the fees have increased as much as they have, and by the way, I'm not sure if you're aware, but some of the owners have been told that as these new fee categories were created, they are bumped into those categories based upon heated, not heated and cooled space. So adding your garage, adding your other concrete spaces around the house. So it's bumping a lot of people, even on top of a five hundred percent increase in fees over two years, into even higher categories. And these are the people that can least afford that. But as we have responded to all of this, the question remains, why, if there is such a pressing, urgent need for the city to regulate short-term rental owners and watch everything that we do and require all of the accountability from, from the homeowners, what about condos? And the answer generally has been, well, they have HOAs. But so do short-term homeowners have HOAs. In fact, some of those HOAs are very hands-on. And in fact, we pay extra fees and five hundred dollars in some of the cases for wristbands that pay for security officials. So to pay the city extra fees and then to pay for the internal HOA fees with very good governing structures. And then to look at the condos that have the very same problems as STR homes. Noise, trash, the only noise complaint I've ever made has been on condos at three in the morning. So, and the bunk bed build-outs, the life and safety, as you call it, issues are very prevalent. Ingress, egress, the one per two hundred square feet. Condos have very little ability for exit plan, um, kinds of arrangements. So the question has been pressing more and more as the regulations have mounted and there have been more conversations with short-term rental task force individuals. What about condos? If this is a legitimate concern on the part of the city, why such intense regulation and scrutiny of the homes? And absolutely nothing when it comes to the condos.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, no comments. Up next, Jonathan.
Yes.
Got three minutes, Jonathan, just state your name and your address for the public record.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Charisma, and, uh, I live on Gulf Shore Drive here in Destin, Florida. I want to thank you for the opportunity of speaking also, um, on the matter of the moratorium. In two thousand and eighteen, I set out to embark on a business endeavor, uh, to open a pontoon rental company. At the current time, I was playing professional football. And, um, I cannot balance that, uh, with being here and, um, a career in football and trying to run a business. And it, it was, it was pretty hard trying to do both. And recently, uh, I was aware of the moratorium. And my concern is, at the current time, within the last year and a half, um, I've invested seventy-two thousand in pontoon boats alone. I've even leased a property here in Destin. And also, I'm currently paying a marina to keep, uh, the boats and materials that were proposed to start the business with. And I'm here speaking to you today, uh, to discuss the matter of what could I possibly do or what would need to be done, uh, in order to be able to actually open the business, uh, like I set out to do a year and a half ago. And I don't think I need the full three minutes. Uh, I, I got to the gist of it, uh, pretty quick.
Would anyone like to address?
Yeah, if you want. Um, we have a process under the moratorium ordinance where you can, um, speak with staff and we can go over your, um, options. There's two exceptions to the moratorium for hardships, um, that we can talk about.
Okay, is there, um, a time and date, uh, to where I could specifically do that?
You mean, you want to make an appointment?
Uh, do I need to?
No, you can show up anytime at the annex, this building over here, at the window right outside these doors.
Okay, and that's during normal business hours?
Yeah, it's eight to five.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, again, thank you for allowing me to speak, that's all I need.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, now? That's all the cards I got, so I'll take a guess from the, uh, audience, sir. Would you come, come up? Oh. You want to?
Just turn off the light a bit.
Oh, okay. He's coming up.
Kevin Schmidt at, uh, thirty-eight ninety-six Indian Trail. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am speaking tonight as the Vice Chairman of the Public Works and Safety Committee. Uh, we recently had a meeting and I was not able to get this, uh, item added to the agenda, so I'm here during this section. The, uh, item that we recently met, um, in our meeting and made a motion and voted on it to approve it is in direct relation with item four C, the airport guard rail design. So I'm sure we are all aware the airport road is a very, uh, hot topic over many years now. Specific individuals even on the city council have been working on it for probably six or seven years. And I myself, as well as other public works or safety members, have been working on it for a handful of years as well. In recent year, we're more aware of the issue as FDOT has begun plans to implement some design and change things on that curve. And due to that, the city has also decided to try to put some preventative measures, i.e. the guard rail system that they are up for discussion tonight. Walton Beach, uh, one of their two guard, um, flashing speed limit signs that they installed on Hollywood Boulevard to help, um, fix some speed enforcement issues on Hollywood Boulevard. And they have actually reported that they have seen success from those installs. As you might have read so far, the task order that is being presented tonight to execute is for design, uh, the design only of the guard rail system for approximately thirty-two thousand dollars or not to exceed that amount. After that design, if it was happening and if it was approved to go on and build the guard rail system, you might have been told or will hear that it's approximately sixty to seventy thousand dollars to install the guard rail systems. Close to a hundred thousand dollars invested in that. As a reminder, there's no guarantee from the Florida Department of Transportation that when they do their install or their upgrades, that they will not remove the guard rail system or change it. Potential a hundred thousand dollars thrown away whenever they go under construction within a year or two. So we know the guard rail system will help prevent people from crossing over the median, uh, using the NASCAR-type wall to prevent people from driving through it. But ask yourself what's gonna happen similar to the fence along the airport, what happens when people do run into it? And they do destroy it. Uh, it gets torn up. What's gonna happen is the city's gonna have to fix it. And the city's gonna have to pay for it. And we're gonna have to try to go after and get it from insurance, but we all know the city's gonna pay for it. And a hundred thousand dollars now is just even going up higher and higher and higher. So just to give you an idea, those signs from the city of Walton Beach were purchased for approximately twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And they were installed, uh, altogether for about fifteen grand. That's an estimate, uh, total of about fifteen thousand dollars to put two signs in. So the motion that we, uh, passed five to one the other night reads as follows, in case you don't have it, but it was to recommend to the city council to consider installing the flashing lights in lieu of or in addition to the guard rail barriers. Just, we hope that you take in consideration before immediately executing a thirty-something thousand dollar contract just to design something that might ultimately be torn up or have to be fixed and replaced over and over and over in the next twelve to twenty-four months. An alternative method with the flashing signs that say, slow down your speed or one of those types of methods. So happy to answer any questions, but I do appreciate you letting me present our, uh, motion from the safety committee.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate that. Do we have any comments from the, uh, council members? Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate, I know you've been an advocate on this term for the years that you've been serving on this committee. So I, I do appreciate your input.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Kevin, thanks for the presentation. Lance, what timeline are we on with the high friction resurfacing?
Potentially, uh, midsummer is the best, best-case scenario, midsummer.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Peggy? Or you gotta turn it off, okay. Ms. Peggy, come on up. They turned the button off, so now you're gonna have to turn it on. Give your, there you go. Just state your name and where you live.
Destin. And, um, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to, I'll make a brief. I know we're on a short schedule here. And, uh, just, uh, also want to thank all the department heads that really make this city work, is what I say. So thank you all. I just thought I would, since this was, um, a vision that came to an old lady late at night, I just thought I'd add some more to this. It made me think briefly, and I'm not gonna, uh, this is the beginning of a pregnancy, what we're talking about. There are a lot of things that will have to be determined, and I'm not saying that I'll have answers for your questions. The point that I want to make, that it's gonna take, I think, anything that I might say when we extrapolate the numbers, it will all come into focus. To give an example, the economic impact here looks like it's gonna be between twenty-four million, twenty-eight million a year. That's a lot. And of course, um, when you think about the jobs, a minimum, it looks like about two hundred and fifty jobs a year. Uh, that's adding a lot to this community. Now, when I think about this event center, I think about it in the terms of the things that we've noted. Of course, we'll have, I think it's very important to Destin, that we bring in another sport activity. I came up with the ice skating. We'll have two rinks, I would suggest, one for the hockey players, they're all over the panhandle. If I was, um, a younger woman, I could have had lots of dates with these ice hockey guys. They all, they all would like to, I hope I'll encourage y'all to do this. It's very important that we take the ice skating. You take, I'd like to see a rehab center in it. All the other things, uh, say, um, the restaurant. Any of these things that we have noted, the parking facility, put the new community center incorporated into this. And what you would have then is a tremendous event center. Now, I was gonna use that larger word, coliseum. And our, my friend here who gave the presentation said, Peggy, that's sort of getting to be a dated term. So he suggested to the mayor now that we think in the terms of event. Just think of all, there are all types of musical. I was reading in the paper the other night, uh, the writers' thing that comes in, the songwriters' thing that comes on thirty-eight every year. There's so many, many projects that come in. And I think what we'll have to do, we'll have a, um, we'll have a feasibility study done that will take each of these things that you all decide on and Destin decides on that you want in here. It doesn't have, I mean, it's nothing is in stamped, that we have to have this, we have to have that. Of course, the mayor and I will pout if we don't get a skating rink, but besides that part, I mean, it's, it's up to the community here. But I would like to think that when we have all of these determination of what we're gonna put in here, then we would take those numbers and they would, of course, as you all well know, project them on out. And we'd come back to a number that could support whatever would be the debt. I'm not gonna get into it now, but really, the way I figure it, and we have three, we have three sites, only one large, um, but the other one are basically ten and twelve acre sites. So we have about three or four of them in the community. Uh, I'm negotiating with all of them because we might be in that position. Just telling them that we were thinking about it, they all have started hounding me, wanting to, when are we gonna take the land down? I said, well, it's not gonna be soon, I don't think it's gonna be that. But anyway, I just encourage you all to think about the impact. It made me think of living in Brentwood, Tennessee. And we had the opportunity for the Cool Springs Mall to be there. The tax implication of that was tremendous. Everybody started griping about, and it's a legitimate concern, the infrastructure. So what happens? They go down the street, they'll go to the Cool Springs exit, get off, one exit down, and they put the big mall there. And of course, Brentwood's been crying ever since. And of course, Brentwood's been crying ever since that they miss all that income being there, where the, let's, so it's a tremendous, the parking, I don't have a solution for the parking and infrastructure, the, excuse me, the infrastructure now. I think that, I think Destin probably being landlocked is going to have that problem forever. I mentioned, I mentioned that I, the mayor has, this is just my personal thought on this. I tried to introduce it to him once, and he just didn't want to hear about it. But I can see in the future, maybe down around the harbor somewhere, God knows, I don't know, that there'd be another bridge that would take us on over to the Mid Bay Bridge. So I think eventually in time, there's going to have to be some correction, some study done on that that will encourage it, sort of soften this infrastructure, or it's going to be here for quite a while.
Thank you, Ms. Can you wrap up your thoughts?
But however, the impact of the monies coming into Destin, I think would be hard to turn down, because if we turn it down here, it'll just be a all-up of ninety-eight.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next. Anyone else like to add during, Bill? Come on up. I couldn't see you way over there in the corner. That's not your, what's up with that? I'm used to you being front and center. You're easy to see that way.
Well, I know, but I'm hiding.
Well, plus that red jacket matches that red dot behind you. Go ahead.
My eyes a lot of mornings, too. Bill Reddington, Vintage Circle. I was going to say the first lady that got up here and was talking about the Eglin land west of the bridge, I think she has a terrific idea in terms of going after the military structure that was there and destroyed during one of the hurricanes enough so they never rebuilt it. My concern when I first heard about this was the fact that I've been swimming in that inlet there back when I was young, and it about put me under. So if you're going to have little kids swimming over in there, I don't know how many twelve lifeguards you're going to have in that stretch, but that current there is brutal, okay? When the tide's going in or out? So that's why I heard thought about going after the military buildings that are there makes much more sense, because obviously the beach there is a lot better. When I first moved here, I had a friend that was retired, and he took us to the beach there many, many times. It was pretty nice to get a hamburger and a drink and all the rest of it and have a bathroom, more importantly. So that's existing. The remodel on that for the city could be pretty inexpensive. Now, I don't know how much damage is there, because I hadn't been in there since it, since the hurricane did what it did. But once again, I believe that she has the right idea there in terms of going after the whole piece, and since they don't use it anymore, why not? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience, like, you'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak? Didn't you already speak? Or you did a presentation? Did she already speak?
Yeah, she did.
Three minutes. Okay, yeah, got to, got to be fast.
Carrie, I did have, I'm so glad you brought that up again. We had talked so much about the aquarium, and let me tell you how we can tie it in just real quick. We live in a fishing community, and we offer the greatest quality of the species of seafood, the second largest, isn't it the second in the country of the quality of the, anyway, the aquarium, we could tie it in with the museum, which would tie it into the fleet, and we would actually be a real fishing community, again. And when you go to Tennessee and Gatlinburg, their aquarium's so big, the sharks fly over and the kids are, and let me say, Prebels, perhaps, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ramswell, perhaps we could do the marine biology. We could get these kids into science, because that's how my kids got thrown into this ecosystem. My kids are the science geeks over this. Great idea, aquarium, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Braden. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any further comment? No public comment? We'll close this portion of it, move right on. There'll be another opportunity at the tail end of the meeting for people to share any of their thoughts concerning any of the actions or ideas or comments made by the council tonight. So, seven eighteen, should we take a break before we get into, or should we go? Take a break? Let's take a five-minute recess. All right. At this time, I will go ahead and call the meeting back in session. So we are on Item 4A, City Manager's Report, which is now moved by Mr. Moore in a Food for Thought lease agreement. Let's go ahead. You guys ready? Take it away, sir.
Sure. I would like to invite Tiffany up to speak on behalf of Food for Thought and kind of walk us through their situation.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Tiffany Nelson. I am the founder and CEO of Food for Thought Outreach. Thank you for your time and attention. Twenty-twenty marks our ten-year anniversary at Food for Thought, so it's been ten years since my children and I started Food for Thought Outreach in my kitchen, where we were serving six kids with a three-hundred-dollar budget. So since then, this organization has grown to serve three thousand, three hundred children a week across Oaklusa and Walton Counties. Our services are provided in thirty-five school locations in the two counties. We run five separate programs, all designed to fight child hunger, so that we can empower children to stay in school, get the most out of their education, and graduate to become productive members of your community. Within Destin, Destin Elementary and Destin Middle School were our first schools in Oaklusa County that we served. We reach nearly two hundred students a week through our five programs in those two schools, and more than half of the children that we serve at Food for Thought are in Oaklusa County schools. So for years, we went from borrowed space to borrowed space in Oaklusa County trying to find a home for our program. So understand that to provide our services, we distribute thirty thousand food items a week, and we use two hundred and fifty individual volunteers. Space is important to do what we do. So it was about five years ago that we were presented with the opportunity on the airport road location. While the location was fantastic for us, the building itself needed a lot of work. I see some smiles, you know what it looked like. So Food for Thought, in partnership with the Destin Rotary, the City of Destin and the Destin Chamber, came together, and we did an over two-hundred-thousand-dollar renovation on that location through in-kind donations given to Food for Thought. So since we've been in that location, we have flourished in the community. Our volunteers now have a home, they know where to go, we have three employees that are based in that location. In that particular small pantry, we distribute over seventeen thousand food items a week, and it would be our goal to stay in that location. At our ten-year anniversary, sustainability is important to us, so in keeping with our goal to sustain our services in your community, we're asking to extend our lease agreement with the city for another five years. Thank you. Are there questions?
Yes, stay right there. Yeah. Mr. Braden.
Thank you. I don't know if we're making a motion on this tonight or not, but I would like to support something on, maybe go back to staff and renegotiate the contract on this for the other five years, and maybe a reduction in the rent, so you can put that money towards feeding the kids instead of rent.
Absolutely. As a privately funded nonprofit, that would be wonderful. I would support that if that's a motion.
All right.
No, yeah, just on their contract, I was going to say that they're in, they have two one-year options, and I think they're exercising their first, so they've got another
This is our, our second.
Second.
We just exercised our second. We sent a letter that I know the city just signed for.
Got it. So, you know, on top of, and she's asking for a five-year lease, and I know as a, as a, you know, I lease a building for my business, and I'm hesitant to make improvements to that property with only a five-year lease, you know, I would prefer to have more security in terms of options, so, no, we'll have a discussion, and any lease agreement that we sign with them, I would like for y'all to have a couple five-year options instead of these one-year options to exercise.
Yes, that would be much appreciated.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Destin. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was looking over your lease agreement, and I think probably what the best way to do is, is maybe renegotiate the terms, basically pursuant to the spirit of what Mr. Morgan said, and I'm really keen on what Ms. Ramswell and Mr. Braden brought up, which is a reduction. I know that currently, we have a dollar-a-year lease with the Destin History and Fishing Museum, and while they provide cultural enrichment for our children, I think this is arguably even more important, which is making sure that they're fed. And so I'll make a motion that we instruct staff and the city's attorney to renegotiate the terms of this lease in spirit with, of Mr. Morgan's suggestion of some renewals, and also to reduce the rent term to a dollar a year.
Second. I've got a motion, I got a second. Any further comments?
I would just like to tell you thank you, and that that reduction in rent would actually equal our ability to reach almost two thousand more children a year, so thank you for your consideration.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote. The vote, I gladly can say was unanimous, so move. Thank you. Thank you, council members.
Mayor, I just want to say, I want to commend Ms. Nelson and her volunteers. I know for a fact, my wife does a little bit of volunteering with you with teaching some of the cooking classes, and you're an absolute force of nature, and we're lucky to have you in our community. Just wanted to tell you thanks.
One of our favorite charities, me and the boys. All right, let's go on, we're moving on to 4B, which was moved by our city attorney, memorandum of understanding between the City of Destin, Oaklusa County. Kyle?
So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to quickly introduce the Deputy County Administrator, Craig Coffey, who is here tonight, and I don't want to steal the thunder from Mr. Bowman, but I just wanted to recognize that he was here to address this if he, if he needed to.
Hopefully, you can stay in the back, but you're here in case we need you. Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, I just want to thank Craig for coming, too. The county has been a terrific partner in this whole endeavor. As you know, we've been trying to dredge these paths for at least a year and a half now, met many roadblocks, believe we're close to the end here. As part of the process, we've encountered a situation where the city's permit is pretty much cleared at this point. Regulatoryly, it's, it's cleared, we could dredge under it. Financially, however, the city is not a qualified non-federal sponsor, therefore, we cannot receive flow-through federal funds relating to this project. The county, however, is a qualified non-federal sponsor and can receive those funds, and the county is also funding the remainder of the project. Total project value is estimated to be about two million. The federal funds are about one-point-five, and the TDC is funding about half a million. So this memorandum of understanding that I have presented before you today simply memorializes our agreement as it relates to our permit, the county is now a co-permitee with us under our permit, and our duties and rights under the Destin permit, so. I'm looking for a motion and
Mayor, I'll give you that motion.
Sure. It's a recommended motion.
Ooh, I'm not, I don't have the recommended one, but I think I could probably get pretty close. That way I can't screw it up. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Oaklusa County and the City of Destin for East Pass dredging, authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding, and direct city staff to take all necessary actions to ensure the East Pass is dredged as soon as possible.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Any questions for our partners from Oaklusa County or Mr. Bowman? Seeing none? Vote unanimous, so moved. We don't get to go home yet. All righty, so those were our two items that had been moved, so now we're back on to our city manager's report, and take it away, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In fact, the original item 4A, the city staff and the city land use attorney was asked to look into the possibility of getting into an agreement with the United States Air Force for the piece of property that is on the west side of the Marler Bridge just to the north, so a very small area in comparison to what was being discussed tonight. Staff has researched this, looked into it, done some due diligence, and we have brought forward three potential motions for you to consider. Staff's probably most favorite of the three would be to have you assign this item to the Parks and Recreation Committee, so they can research it further and bring back a potential recommendation for this. If the items that were discussed tonight were to be included, we would need to give them instructions to look at that, because originally, we were talking about a very small piece right, right there on the west side of the bridge. But I would be happy to try to answer any questions, or Ms. Cop, can I answer some questions to you?
We have any questions?
The west side of Marler Bridge, which would be the Oaklusa Island side, right? And then, where the Coast Guard is, to the right, you're talking about to the right? If you're going towards Gulf Side. So that little barren strip where the sign is? Okay, I just needed to get it straight in my head.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would move that Parks and Recreation Committee explore this opportunity, its benefits, its costs, and bring back a recommendation to the council for consideration to include the, the area that we discussed earlier of the, I guess that Eglin owns the NCO Beach Club.
Okay, I got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved.
Mr. Mayor, Item 4B was a request to approve a consultant for building height analysis. Ms. Kimberly Cop brought a, brought a proposal forward not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars, and I can turn it over to Ms. Cop.
Yeah, every, all the information is listed in the staff report, but if you have questions, I am here to answer them. There's also a recommended motion.
I'll entertain a motion, and if there's any discussion beyond that, we'll go with it.
I move to approve the proposal from Fisher Planning and Development Consultants dated January fifteenth, twenty-twenty, not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars payable from the city's fund balance, authorize staff to make the required budget amendments, and authorize Fisher Planning and Development Consultants to commence work pursuant to the timetable set forth therein.
Second. Got a motion, got a second. Any comments? Seeing none? Vote unanimous, so moved. Sir?
Item 4C is in regards to the airport road guard rail design. Staff was asked to get with Volker Engineering and discuss an arrangement with them to do the engineering for the guard rail system on airport road curve. That took place, or the request took place on December second. Staff did meet with Volker on January the eighth and have, has come to an agreement with them that is pending your approval, and that item is before you for consideration tonight, approving that agreement.
And this kind of falls right in with what Mr. Schmidt and the Public Works guys talked about, and falls in with what Mr. Menchel had listed under his Item Seven. So we can entertain a motion, have a discussion, or we can, we can kind of change it a little bit and have a discussion first and cover all the bases before we have a motion? So if it pleases the council, which way would you guys like to do it? Just have a broad-based discussion at first? Let's, okay, Skip said he'd like to do a motion first? We'll do a motion, we'll stay within Robert's rules and have a motion in a second, and then we'll have a robust discussion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a task order with Volker Engineering for the design of airport road guard rail systems in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars, to be taken from transportation impact fees and to make any required budget amendments.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
I got a second. So we'll have discussion, and I see, Mr. Braden, you're up the plate.
Thank you, Mayor. And to say thirty-two thousand dollars is extremely high for a design would be an understatement. I mean, that's just, that's ludicrous. There ain't no way I could support that. I think we just need to put the temporary barriers up there and move on, maybe do what the recommendation earlier was for the, the speed limit, flashing speed limit signs out there and wait for the high friction surface to be in place, but that thirty-two thousand dollars to design it is just, is insane. I don't know, that's, that's crazy. I don't know how I don't know how anybody could support that. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden, Ms. Ramswell.
Thanks. So, Captain Nix, I hate to put you on the spot, but I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how often would you say that there is an accident on that curve? Daily, twice a week? I mean, not even that?
Everything's wrong with Park. It's worse when it rains. There's more accidents when it rains than when it doesn't. So, anytime it rains, you can expect that there'll be one or two accidents the day that it rains, easily, and most of those are rollovers. Once they leave the roadway, hit the grass, they either roll over into the fence, or if they're coming this way, they roll over close to the parking lot, right there where the townhomes are at, where the businesses is on the corner.
What, are temporary barriers effective? Have you, I mean, I'm not asking for like a scientific opinion, but from what you've just seen and noticed as an officer?
I don't have a whole lot of experience with temporary barriers. My whole career pretty much has been here in Destin, and the only guardrails that we've ever had have been out on Scenic 98, there by the Crab Trap. The majority of the wrecks that have been in those curves have been people on rented scooters and some vehicle crashes, but it causes a lot of damage. I don't know about a temporary, but a permanent, it causes a lot of damage when they're hit.
And then, sorry, my last question. How effective do you all find the signs, such as being recommended by Public Works and Safety?
Well, the signs that they have, when we put the, when I put the speed signs on both sides of the roadway, it slowed traffic down pretty good, but it only slowed traffic down for a few days. And once they realize that there's no enforcement action, it's just the sign saying you're going over the speed limit, then they speed back up.
Is there a way to empower you all to put the signs there and enforce the signs? So that people know that you're going to get a ticket if you're speeding on this corner or curve?
Well, okay, so, the yellow signs that are on the corner itself are caution signs. They're basically saying the recommended speed for this curve is this speed. It's not an enforceable sign. The speed limit sign, the white speed limit signs that are on the road are the enforceable signs.
Which is 35, right?
Which is 35. So, I don't know if anybody noticed, but when we put the signs, when we put the speed trailers out there, we purposely lowered the sign on the speed trailer to get people to slow down. Even though the speed limit sign was 35 miles an hour, we put it on the speed trailer as 25. It still wasn't an enforceable sign because it wasn't placed by DOT. It would have had to been put there by DOT in order for us, but what we tried to do is get people to slow down while we're in the corner, while they're going through that corner. The only way we're going to get people to slow down, it's something that I've already started working on, is I have increased the enforcement on Airport Road. I've asked for the deputies that aren't taking calls for service, that have radars, to go out and strictly enforce the speed limit signs on Airport Road, to see if we can't get people to comply with the speed limit.
I know you all are real good about giving people some breaks, but I think if word got out that you weren't giving people a break on this curve, that that might help too in conjunction with signs and save us some money, maybe even make y'all some money until the permanent fix comes in, which, Lance, you said you thought earliest summer, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
I was a huge proponent of putting in these guardrails, but now looking at the time it's going to take to implement them, the cost of the design, and all the rigmarole that's going into having them done, I'm now leaning towards something that makes better sense and taking the recommendation of the committee, along with seeing if we can get, you know, the sheriff's office to continue enforcement of even the 35, because the problem in the people going 35, it's the problem of wet roads and people going 45 or more.
The one thing I'll tell you, too, from personal experience and from my, well, from my law enforcement experience, is when somebody hits the guardrail, they're going to come back out into traffic. So, you don't have the option of somebody going around the corner, hitting the grass, and then coming to a stop, whether they hit the airport fence or whether they come to a stop naturally. What they're going to do is they're going to go through the corner, they're going to hit the guardrail, and then they're going to come back out into traffic. And when they do that, then it's, especially on Airport Road, Airport Road being a real, we had 46 crashes on Airport Road, or 47, and I think we had 46 on Commons Boulevard. So, they, there's, that road is used so much for people trying to circumvent the construction work that's on 98, so it's extremely busy, and with that amount of traffic, they're going to continue to speed up, and you can have a patrol car out there writing a citation with the blue lights on, and they still speed past patrol car, so.
My whole thought process was of trying to avoid a head-on collision, but maybe that doesn't happen as often as it seems like it might, and I'm not even really asking for an answer, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, but, so, that's sort of my thought process tonight, is I've kind of switched to taking the advice of the safety, Public Works and Safety Committee, and then stepping up enforcement of that speed limit over there.
Thank you, Ms. Ramswell, Ms. Menchel.
Thank you, ma'am. I think Dr. Ramswell is a mind reader, because three-quarters of what she said, I was preparing to say. Okay, so, let me just put this in perspective. First of all, I spoke with Captain Nix about this, what I'm going to talk about, and this was under, as the mayor said, this is under my thing, under 7C1, and it's titled, "Okaloosa Sheriff's Office Increase Traffic Enforcement on Airport Road." Okay, we all agree, whether or not we agree up here or not about the effectiveness of the guardrail, one thing everybody agrees to, the way to stop the problems on Airport Road is slow people down, period, whether we have a guardrail, friction service, or whatever slowing people down. So, I want to give Mr. Warren credit for something, because the city manager and Mr. Warren and I were having a meeting last Thursday, and we were conjuring up this thing about the increased traffic enforcement, and to, up to and including having a big press release and really push increased enforcement along Airport Road. If we can slow people down, we're going to stop these crashes. So, we came up with, and I said, give the credit, Mr. Warren was sitting there, and he said, the CAG line, if you will, is not to fly down Airport Road. Okay, would be our public relations thing.
Don't fly.
Okay, don't fly down Airport Road. Okay, or don't crash on Airport Road. Okay, and we, and the point being is, is that I'm trying to get the consensus of the council to, again, what Dr. Ramswell said, is to get the sheriff's office to basically have a zero tolerance on Airport Road. Okay, first and foremost, with a public relations campaign, if we put it on our webpage, if we do press releases, and more importantly, social media will do the work for us, because the minute the sheriff's office gets out there and start writing tickets, it'll be all over social media, they're out there, and it'll slow it down, and that's what we're trying to do, save lives. In regards to the guardrail, as you all know, I sat out there for years as the director, as the chair of Public Works, pushing for this, and I think that for the guardrail, and the problem we have now is, is a time element. Several years ago, it was a good thing to do, because we didn't have the LAPGRAN in place, we didn't have the FDOT, we have those things now. Something that I learned in Public Works the other night, all of the guardrail, if we do do it, all of the guardrail that was along Scenic 98 at the Crab Trap, the city of Destin now has. So, if we would install guardrail, we wouldn't be paying for that, that's a plus in that regard. What my concern is, just like the other council members, by the time we pay this program to get drafted up, and by the time it's construction, we'll be putting it in on Tuesday, and FDOT will be coming in on Thursday, tearing it up. Okay, so, my question is, and I know staff can't say this right now, but if nothing else, I would move to possibly put this off to another council meeting as far as a vote on this, only to get this question answered. Can we narrow down how much actual time would have that guardrail in place before it's pulled up? Because if we're going to spend this much money for two weeks, it's crazy. Okay, and last but not least, in regards to the guardrail, just like Captain Nick said, and everybody agrees, you hit the guardrail, the car is going to bounce, but Public Works way back when, and my idea on this was, it's to prevent a head-on collision. That's the only thing you could guarantee doing. You're driving on one-way on Airport Road, and somebody goes screaming across the median and kills your baby and your wife, that type thing, the guardrail would stop that. Will it do damage? It positively is going to do damage. It's going to bounce the cars back and forth, like we said, but the only thing it'll do is prevent a head-on collision crossing the median. So, my thought is, number one, and Captain, I took notes the other night, and I know you weren't prepared tonight, you were one-off. There were 45 crashes on Airport Road, so you were one-off. But there were 45 crashes between January and January on Airport Road. So, I don't know, again, like Dr. Ramswell said, I don't know if we need a motion or what, but my big thing is, is to ask the sheriff's office to have a zero tolerance and as much as they can. Doesn't have to be all day long, they can go out there, five minutes one time, 10 minutes, but really, really start doing that, and to get a public relations thing going. Again, don't fly down Airport Road, don't crash on Airport Road. So, I don't know what we need to do to make that happen.
I'll make a motion to table the issue and to instruct Catherine Card to, our public informations officer, to work with staff and Mr. Menchell to get a public surface announcement going that code enforcement, or, excuse me, speed enforcement on airports going to be increasing.
And that's the table of this motion on the floor right now?
Correct.
Okay, so, I have a motion table.
Second. The only, the only question I would have is if, in addition, and it's not part of the motion, but if staff could try to figure out that timeline, so it would help us next meeting, in other words, when will the guardrail actually be in place based on a development and a construction versus when FDOT's coming? It's going to be real close.
Okay, I got a motion.
Can I ask for an amendment or an addition to that motion?
A motion to table, you have to vote on as is.
Well, I kind of blended it, and that may be true.
Yeah, I mean, you could sever the motion, or...
Yeah, I sever the motion, let's just do a motion to table first.
Okay, I got a motion to table. I got a second, so let's vote. For those of you that were still on the list to discuss, we will probably have, you'll have an opportunity on the next motion. Sorry, guy. Sorry, that was on me, I didn't push a button enough. Okay, motion's table.
Ms. Ramswell, if you knew what you wanted to add, I'm pretty friendly to probably whatever you're going to amend onto it, so if you want to make the motion...
Just make a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and incorporate the suggestion of Public Works and Safety and add the speed trailers to the Airport Road curve.
I got a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, unless my interpretation was incorrect, what the Public Works Public Safety Committee was recommending were permanent radar signs out there, not the trailers, like in downtown Fort Walton Beach.
Well, I can, I know what you mean, I'll hop in there and just make the motion. So, I move to instruct staff to work with the public information officer and put out a campaign online and elsewhere, wherever they can see it fit, to instruct the general public that we are going to be having increased code enfor, I keep saying code enforcement, I'm sorry, increased speed enforcement by the sheriff's office on Airport Road, and to instruct staff to bring some options back with regards to costs and recommendations on some, I believe it was radar signage.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Menchel?
I just want to say, just like Captain Nick said, and we talked about this time and time again, you can put up those radar signs, you can do anything, the captain already said it doesn't do any good, and what you find yourself doing is, these youngsters get in the car, and they try to see how fast they can make the sign register. Okay, it's 35, let me see it go to 40. I just think right now, spending $30,000 for these lights that aren't going to be effective, we need to think that through, but we'll wait and see what the city, what the staff recommends. Thank you.
All right, I got a motion, got a second. Any other discussion? Eyes have it, so moved. Moving along then.
Item 4D is in regards to the Stallman Avenue intersection and the assessment that was requested by council some time ago. We have since sat down with Volker to determine a task order for them to engineer some potential solutions for that intersection and the surrounding area, both short-term solutions and long-term solutions. Just to remind council, there were a couple of things pending when this came up, that we wanted to see if there was anything we could do in the short term to make that a safer intersection for the upcoming season, and we also wanted to look at some potential options as far as what the city wants that intersection to look like, look like in the future, because there's some other studies preparing to go forward, both on the county level and on the state level, and if we have in our hip pocket what we want it to look like, we can hand that off to them and tell them, this is what we want it to look like. That item is, that task order is before you for approval tonight.
Mr. Braden, you're first up.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I would, I'd really like to see what the county's idea, I'll reach out to the county and see what their idea, what they're planning on doing there, before we spent the money getting an idea of redesigning this intersection. I think Lance, you, I brought that up before, and you had mentioned something about that would speed the process up, or on getting that intersection redesigned. Do you remember any of that?
I do. So, I just want to make sure that we do this correctly, that the area, there's an area associated with the PDNE that the state will do and that the county will do that actually comes off of Highway 98. The area beyond that, like more towards the community center, we need to decide, we, you all need to decide what you want that to look like, and that's what this study would do, and then we can marry that with the county and the state's plans in the future. I don't...
Yeah, that helps some, I just didn't want to waste $50,000 on the design that the county was going to come back and do their, do a redesign, pay, I think they had budgeted $140,000 comes to mind on designing that, redesign that intersection, and we're just going to waste $50,000 on designing it, you know, but if we can get some kind of benefit, you know, focus more on, like you said, a design on Stallman, the surrounding areas, not just the intersection that we may not have a whole lot of say-so in, because it's a state road, and may be able to support it.
I know one thing that we discussed when this originally came up was potentially adding another lane coming into that intersection to, so we would have a designated left, designated straight, designated right, and that would ease up some of the congestion there and hopefully make the pedestrian crossing a safer area, too. Then there were all kinds of other ideas that were thrown out there, like we make one of those roads near, in front of the community center a one-way, I mean, there were all kinds of other suggestions that were being thrown around out there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Well, Ms. Ramswell, before we get to it, I have a question for the city manager. So, your recommendation is if we do use Volker, that the city council would have more say-so in the outcome, and then because it would look like what we want it to be, that would facilitate the county's evaluation and the FDOTs?
Absolutely, and I hate to keep referring back to our first conversation about this, but one of the main reasons why council wanted to move this forward at that time was, we were discussing the termination of the crosstown connector on Stallman, and then how we were going to deal with that traffic and getting it back, getting it back onto Highway 98. And so, we needed, if we want to have a say-so in how it looks, we need to come into this with a plan in our hip pocket, and that's what, they would provide some options for us to do that.
The reason I ask that question is that we would have more say in our idea of what we want it, not just have to rely only on the county or FDOT. Ms. Ramswell?
Well, one question is for councilman over there, because aren't you on TPO? Have you all been discussing this at all, or have you heard any sort of rumors as to...
We still, well, what FDOT?
Mike?
FDOT is waiting for us to tell them what we want, and they keep saying that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just thought I'd ask. So, one thing I didn't see on here unless I missed it, and it was an idea that I had thrown out and kind of expected everyone to laugh, and instead, they liked it, was the pedestrian tunnel under the road? I didn't see that on here. And I personally, I thought that was a good idea, I wouldn't have brought it up, and others I wouldn't have brought it up, and others agreed. So I'd like to see that as something that was considered.
We can make that happen.
Okay. I wouldn't think that would fall under the Stallman intersection. That's a standalone project, wouldn't it be? Or would, I'm just asking.
You're talking about at the Stallman intersection, right? Not the other one that we're trying to get under the bridge?
Yeah, for pedestrians.
I was thinking about the one under the bridge.
Oh, no.
Okay. Ms. Marler?
Thank you, Mayor. Exactly how much, I guess the thing, the thing to ask is, is that from my understanding, since I drive that intersection daily, is where are we going to, when we're looking at redesigning, what are we redesigning? How it comes in and how it comes out? Because I don't believe we're going to be able to acquire any right-of-way. Because a Whataburger, I don't think is going to give up what little piece of right-of-way they got left. And the other side's going to be where the Chevron station is. And one of those will require FDOT to move a post, move a light post or a stoplight post. So I'm interested to see what Volker could come up with.
Do I have a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Skip on there, he's good.
Yeah, I can do that. I move that the city manager be authorized to execute a task order with Volker Engineering to provide an assessment of the Stallman Avenue-US ninety-eight intersection and adjacent areas, consistent with the base scope of work provided, to include the local concerns meeting in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars to be taken from transportation impact fees and to make any necessary budgeted amendments.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion on this item? Vote. Eyes have it, so moved.
Item four E is our monthly development review system update, and we have Mr. Warren here to cover that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is our software development update. Our Intergov implementation folks came out last week, January fourteenth through sixteenth, met with city staff. Again, this is the heavy lifting phase. We are getting into the processes, into the fees, into every granular part of this process that's going to go into the software. So this is truly the heavy lifting phase, but our staff is responding well. The track, the project is on track, and we continue to move forward. They will be back in February, and we will continue on this track in our planned implementation. Our planned target date remains to be January of twenty twenty-one. But everything is on track, and we're happy to announce that our staff is doing a great job working with our consultants.
Any comments, questions? None? Go ahead, sir. Did you have one, Mr. Braden? Go ahead.
I really hope this comes off great, because I sell it two to three times a week. People with complaints and whatnot, man, just bear with us. We've got a new software coming that's going to fix all this. So it's, yeah, I got high hopes. Thanks for all your help.
We have high hopes, too, but it is going well. Thank you.
So the expected finish date or completion for everything is twenty twenty-one?
January twenty twenty-one, yes, ma'am.
Wow, okay.
It is quite an extensive project, as we've talked about before, but it's going well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just amazed you can get twenty-five years of records scanned and copied and disseminated, let alone all the other stuff. But that's from a guy that types with one finger. Four F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, the city's partnering with the United States Army Corps of Engineers to conduct a harbor capacity study. And we have Mr. Zenguzi here to give an update and a request.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The status of the effort as it is now is that we are in the process right now, waiting for funding. Congress has approved the federal budget, I think it did that last month. Funding is now flowing to various departments and business lines of the federal government. In the meantime, my staff and I and the field office in Mobile of the Army Corps have been working together to come up with a questionnaire that'll be used for the study. And we're going back and forth and refining that. That ultimately needs to be approved by the federal government as well. So that effort is underway. What we do need to put together also is a steering committee that will oversee the entire effort and give recommendations to you through the work that we'll be doing. And we think we should have that in place in about a couple of months, if you approve to go ahead and establishing that committee. And so the request tonight is that you establish that steering committee. And we've suggested a number of interest groups for you to consider. The format I've discussed with the mayor, with the city managers, that perhaps we have an open enrollment, so to speak, invite members of the public, depending on the various interests, stakeholder interest they are in, and they apply, and then we go from there.
All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move that the city council form a harbor capacity study steering committee.
Got a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. Ms. Ramswell, you're first.
Thanks. So explain to me, when I see we have to do a capacity study, my first thought is, okay, we have tons of people here, what is this going to tell us? We've got tons of people here and you can't issue more permits for charter boats? Or what is the purpose of a study such as this?
We did share with you a scope at the beginning of the discussions that we had. And that study is going to look at environmental aspects of the harbor. It's going to look at the balance between recreation and the business side of the harbor. And also going to inform us on what that interaction would be as far as all the uses that are in there, including the capacity of our boarding fleet. And so there'll be a series of recommendations for you to consider from a policy standpoint and equally from a regulation standpoint, to make sure the harbor is to, continues to be a thriving part of the city.
And does it help in securing grants and such?
Yes.
That might be needed, like for environmental purposes and such?
Correct. And if you recall, when I did make the recommendation that we partner with the Army Corps, that was one of my fundamental reasons to why that would give us that standing, to open up that federal list of grants that we could be participating in.
Thanks. I've had a couple of people ask, why are we doing another study? So I appreciate you shedding some light on that. Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Ramswell, I'm fixing to be on a panel, a Magnus and Stevens Act reauthorization listening session with Representative Huffman. And one of my subject matters is working waterfronts. There's provisions in the MSA that maintain certain standards for established working waterfronts, fishing heritage, stuff like that. And I'm going to be speaking to that. A capacity study gives regulators and stuff the information they need to make decisions. We presently have a moratorium on livery vessels, and we've based that on an assumption that we have about as many as we can stand right now. The capacity study will either confirm that or may even show us that, well, there's still room for more growth on the harbor. So, you know, along with our economic impact study that we're doing for our Triumph funding for beach access, of what beaches and water means to Destin, that same information is real critical in these regulatory processes on the national level. So I'm a strong proponent of this study, because I know the value in it, especially if they start instituting new budgetary grants and stuff like that to enhance working waterfronts, just like we have on Destin Harbor with, you know, our fishing fleets and stuff. I got Mr. Over there.
Yeah, in our never-ending effort not to have any new committees or working groups or task forces, wouldn't we just hand this over to the Harbor and Waterways Board and just tell them that they need to work to finalize this survey?
No, I think, I think given the nature of what we need to do, I think we need to incorporate as many of the interest groups that are involved in the harbor, so that we're standing and also to capture as much as possible what's actually happening on the harbor.
And I don't think that committee does, its main task is outside of just the harbor, you know, they do bayside projects, stuff like that. In this type of thing, I think it would be prudent to involve people in the livery vessel industry and the charter for hire industry and restaurant, you know, waterfront property owners like Mr. Destin's father and people that have, that lives depend on that harbor, as part of the steering committee, outside of what we have in our public, you know, one of our standing committees, the Harbor and Waterways. Mr. Menchell?
Thank you, ma'am. In talking with Lewis and the city manager regarding this topic last week, Lewis expressed the urgency, if you will, you know, the importance, if you will, not urgency, to get this committee in place. So my question is, I had discussed this with the city manager, are we going to go ahead and advertise from the standpoint of having people apply for that? And if we do, you know, we need to do it as fast and get a quick turnaround so we can vet it and start appointing, trying to get a timeframe.
Assuming this vote goes affirmative, then we'll be ready to roll this thing out on the web, and then Catherine will follow up with other advertising.
And not only that, I think as individual council members, myself as mayor, we can go ahead and beat the bushes, people we know that would be interested in serving.
In addition, of course.
Yeah. So I think if we do a multi-faceted front here, we can get some people to apply, we can get this done in a timely manner. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Vote unanimous, so moved. Sir?
I have just a few brief announcements. We have a workshop scheduled for January the twenty-seventh at five thirty PM with regards to potential uses of the Half-Cent Sales Tax. On January thirtieth, we have a training scheduled at City Hall for Sunshine Law and ethics rules for the state of Florida. If you, earlier this week, I emailed out an update regarding the Henderson Beach Drive and Commons Drive intersection. After having the discussion with Mr. Burgess, who was able to attend that meeting, it does not currently appear that there are streetlights included in this plan, for whatever reason. And the county staff present at that meeting recommended that we, the city, specifically coming from the mayor and myself, write a letter to the board, the county board, requesting that they include lights in that project for safety reasons. So I'm hoping that with consensus, you all are okay with us sending a letter to them requesting that.
Just a head nod, everybody?
I'm good, because I've been trying to get the lights.
Yeah, we just thought it was kind of unusual to have an intersection of that quality and that size and importance being so dark you couldn't see. So we just thought a letter would just be appropriate to say, hey, we need some lighting. Because they just sent us a letter stating that they're on it and they're going to build it, and they're on tracks. We just, this is just like an oversight, is what we think it is. And we just want to write a letter pointing that out. Hey, by the way, gentlemen.
I didn't notice. Did we have sidewalks on there? Did the county put sidewalks? Because some of those areas do not have the ADA compliance sidewalks.
My understanding is that part of this project will be to complete the sidewalk from the roundabout right out here, all the way to Matthew Boulevard. So that'll be a huge improvement on Commons Drive.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
Might need to bring up putting lights all the way down, not just at the intersection, but I'm sure they'll tackle that at some point.
Also, I've been, I think we've had two editions of the task update sheet going out on Fridays. I hope that you all are able to open that okay. And please don't hesitate to send critiques to me. It's a work in progress. And like I said from the beginning, I mean, we can always keep, we can keep improving it, and that's what I want to do. The other thing is, I appreciate the folks, the members of council who have been able to come in and meet with me one-on-one. And I would encourage everyone to, to come in and meet one-on-one if they're available, but even if not in person, maybe via phone, it just helps me to convey more of this information that I was trying to get out to you all. So apologize if you think I'm overloading you with emails, but if you don't, if you're not interested in those, it's okay. I won't be offended if you just delete them. But I'm going to keep sending them out until you tell me not to. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mayor? Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes?
Once again, I'm a dollar sure. I was going to ask a question earlier with the steering committee. Would you like to require an application? If so, you can probably tweak the application that we use for the task force. And if so, do you have a date certain to where we can give this back to you?
Our original intention was to mimic that process. It's already set up. We just have to adopt it for this committee.
All right, we'll do that by consensus. I think everybody's fine with that, Ray. And then date certain, today's the twenty-first, a Tuesday. This is a, would we say, applications in by February one? Or which are, February third, which is our next city council meeting on a Monday? That would, we could advertise for virtually two weeks. Is that good, or do you think we need more time? Lance, are you good with that? Or do we need more time?
I'd say give more time, yeah.
Okay, let's, well, let's just give it to our second, by our second city council meeting in February. Okay, Ray? All right, so head bobs, so I think we're good. All right, Kyle? I think we're in the public hearing mode.
Right, we have just one item tonight. It's five A, the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero one dash PC. An ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, amending chapter six of the city of Destin's comprehensive plan, coastal management element, providing updates to coastal management element pursuant to state law, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for jurisdiction, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for incorporation into the comprehensive plan, providing for severalability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
All right, well, I'll just open up the public comment period first, and then we'll take it from there. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this particular ordinance twenty dash zero one dash PC? Seeing none? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of it and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve proposed ordinance two oh one, two zero zero one PC, direct staff to follow the EAR report and the ordinance to the State Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO. Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Vote unanimous, so moved. Item six A and B.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept A and B.
I got a motion, got a second? Vote unanimous, so moved. Mr. Braden?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Back December third, I was looking for some specs on the Coleman Lake spillway. Have not received those yet. Preferably the height before and after it was built.
As far as the, where the levels should actually be, and the fix for that spillway?
Yeah, I thought we did some surveys before.
Mr. Burgess has talked with the engineer on record, and he can answer that question for you.
Sure, I have, Mayor and Council, I've researched that original Coleman Lake spillway retrofit. It was, occurred some damage years back, and it was necessary to rebuild the spillway from the existing condition sheet to the final, the plan sheet. And then Jenkins Engineering actually went out about ten days ago and just as a courtesy, shot those elevations. And between the original design, the original condition sheet and what's there now, there's only about a four or five tenths difference, about five or six inches, and it's lower. And when I mentioned to Mr. Jenkins about councils and the citizens' concerns about, you know, the algae growth and they wanted to raise the lake level, he expressed concern that if we did... that if we did that, that we would be losing storage capacity in the lake in the event of a large storm event. And apparently, that road was overtopped by such an event back in 2014.
So, the difference between the old overflow pipe that was there and what is there now is only about a four or five inches difference?
That is correct.
I've also been getting some phone calls, wanting to know why the City of Destin needed a $100,000 a year grant rider, and why couldn't we outsource that?
Well, I don't know about that $100,000 a year thing, but we are advertising as instructed by council to fill the grants manager slash project manager position. We have several large-scale grant programs coming online. This, this position will not only seek out new grants, but will be managing these projects, these capital, capital projects, which we need that to make sure of compliance with both state and federal guidelines. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I don't have the exact number that we advertised for that position. I can tell you that we did not advertise $100,000 for that, far short of that.
Okay, thank you. And stucco repairs on the community center, did we ever find out about the insurance claim on that? Were the insurance going to pay for it or not?
The, Ms. Jankowski did file the claim with the insurance company. The case file is open, and believe the last update that I had of, it was this week, we were waiting for an official cost estimate that we would have to submit to the insurance, again, to see how much of that they will cover. Is that correct, Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, that's correct. I actually have a few contractors of, coming by this week to take a few, look at a few of those problem areas, and then spoken to the city manager before about maybe doing a whole building assessment, where, you know, just kind of putting a boroscope in some of the walls and just seeing what kind of damage we actually do have that may not have presented to the surface as of yet.
Okay, thank you. And have we put out the Heritage Park bid yet? The Royal Melbourne Heritage Park, have we put that out for bid yet?
No, not yet. We're waiting final approval of the bid document from the county.
Do we anticipate when that might be?
I expect that it will be very shortly. I mean, within the next 10 days is what I'm expecting. There were a few items that we, that they wanted us to update on it. One was a cost estimate, and we're providing that to them, but it should go out in the very, I'm hoping, within the next 10 days.
And why, why does the county have to approve, approve that?
It's, it's part of the federal guidelines, that as the recipient, they have to approve that RFP. Yeah, we're the sub-recipient of that money from the treasury, so.
Do we know how long they've had it in their hands? Has it been a week, two weeks, month?
It's been under two weeks for sure, because we didn't approve it until the last meeting, and it took a couple of days for us to, to finish dotting our i's and crossing our t's and getting it to them. So, it's less than two weeks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ramswell?
Thank you, mayor. A couple of things. At the last meeting, we had talked about some of the funding, and I'd mentioned some of the NPPB and NPEB funds, and I had sent that to Mr. Farmer. Were you able to review that and find those funds?
We did confirm that the, the two NPEB funds, $46,000 and I think $48,500, you were correct on those two. One of them has already been attached to the construction, and we will attach the other one this week so that they're both in the funding. We have not been able to confirm yet the Point One contribution, and we're still looking through the development files, trying to figure that out. But as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
Okay, thanks for the update. Let's see, next thing was, oh, I had spoken with Lisa Firth about the Beach Committee that I had talked about a little bit, and she and I kind of brainstormed and talked things through, and it, I think we came to an agreement that because this isn't something that could just be handled by Parks and Rec, the whole idea was to have someone from different levels, such as someone representing Parks and Recs, but also someone representing the lifeguards, someone from the sheriff's office, someone from the county, code enforcement, vendors, city attorney, all these different stakeholders, if you will, so that everybody can come together, discuss the issues, and then all be on the same page before the start of the season. So, with that said, I'm not quite sure what the next step would be, other than figuring out who those people would be, having staff sort of pull that together, and contacting those entities and any others that Ms. Firth believes need to be part of that and get it going.
Apologize, we just want to make sure we don't need an official motion on this. If you are giving us the consensus to move forward with trying to put, put that team together, and we can work with you to get the specific targeted groups you would like represented on that committee, then we'll move it forward.
Do you want to do it in motion form, or can we just do it consensus? Everybody good with that? I am. Okay, we, I think we have a consensus.
Yeah, Ms. Firth can be the point person if she's up to the task and wants that task, and then I'm, I'm willing to help as well, in whatever capacity.
Okay, so you have some direction there? So noted? You guys got it? They got it. Thank you, go ahead.
All right, and let's see. I did want to see about requesting an executive session, maybe, but I'm not sure, we didn't really finish our thought, but something before the next council meeting, maybe just a quick 30 minutes to discuss strategy or something ahead of the mediation, if the attorneys think that's something that would be a good idea?
I don't have anything to discuss at the executive session, but if you have something that needs to be discussed that fits under the requirements of the law for litigation expenditures or strategy, then we can call one, maybe at 5:30 on, on the 3rd. I mean, this, this mediation is very limited in scope, we're not going to be mediating any specific land use issues, we're just establishing a process.
Ms. Cop, aren't we likely to have one, an executive, an executive session directly after, at some point?
Definitely after, because anything that is discussed at the mediation, as previously discussed, you all would have to approve.
I just want to make sure that no negotiations or bargaining or decisions are made at that time, such as we'll do XYZ, but we agree not to do ABC. I'd like to have council discuss strategy before any such decision like that is made.
So, it was already discussed with the lawyers for Point Mezzanine, that no decisions that the lawyers agreed to at the mediation would be binding on the council. So, we would take that back to you regardless. Of course, any approval of that would be at a public meeting, but strategically and expenditure-wise, we could talk about it in an executive session. So, yes, that will definitely come to you after the mediation, and at that point, if we needed to change things, we could probably talk about it then. And like I said, this is just kind of a broad-based process setting. I don't think that we will be making any detailed decisions on land use issues at that time.
Okay, that works, and I'll hold off on that. And then, my last little comment for the evening is some really positive, good news for the community. We had the Destin High School pep rally in Town Hall last Thursday. Myra Williams is here, she's one of the members of the executive board, and she can vouch that it was just an absolutely tremendous event. It was a packed house. The Destin United Methodist Church Gymnasium, as most of you know, is very large. We had enough tables and seating to fill that auditorium, and it wasn't enough. We had to bring out the rest of available chairs, and there were still people standing and sitting on the floor. So, it was tremendous to see the community outpouring of support. We had Representative Mel Ponder come and say a few words. Superintendent Marcus Chambers came and spoke in support of the school as well. So, again, it was just a wonderful next step on the road to this big community dream actually coming true this August. And where we stand right now is we're encouraging anyone that is going to have a ninth or 10th grade student next year, who's even contemplating attending, to go online and submit an application so you can secure your spot. It's not going to make you lose your spot anywhere else, or bind you to anything, but it will secure your spot, and we've got to have students to open. And I think a lot of people are kind of waiting to see the doors open and go, wow, it's really happening, and then sign up, but it doesn't work that way. We've got to have the students to open the school. So, please go online and apply, and again, as always, donations of any size, kind, time, whatever, are more than welcome. But again, just a tremendous effort from the entire Destin High School Board and the community to pull all this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ramswell. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, ma'am. Under my name, we have the resolution, and let me discuss that. And as you all know, in fact, tonight, our agenda packet was only 237 pages. I think that's the first time we've had such a light agenda in months and months. They're typically 500 and 600 pages. And because of that, staff spends a lot of time putting that together, and it's a lot of work for staff. In meeting with the city manager last week, I discussed with him, would it help, because previously, it was on Thursday that it was published. And as you all recall, for the last several months, at least, we get an agenda sent out on Wednesday, and because of additions and deletions, we get another packet on Friday, and it's just a mess, having to upload and download that. So, I was discussing with the city manager, would it help if we reverted back to Thursday? And he certainly, anytime. So, basically, what I was looking to do was rescind the previous resolution portion, and I'll read that. Basically, allowing the city manager and staff to have until midday on Thursday to publish the agenda. Lance assures us that there won't be a rewrite. When it comes out on Thursday, that's it. And just basically giving staff a little bit more time. So, basically, what I was asking for is, let me get this right, that we, Resolution 1822 be rescinded, and previous provisions of Section 6.2 of Resolution 1315 appelled to allow staff more time to process the agenda and help of ordering to republish it. As a motion.
I got a motion, I got a second.
Is that, is that right? Ms. Mitchell? City manager, is that enough?
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Okay, we got a motion?
Mayor, we have Resolution 20-2 that will rescind 18-22, so if you can include adoption of?
To include my motion to adopt Resolution 20-2.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Ramswell?
So, share with me, if you would, your sort of thoughts on this, because I was one of the ones that pushed for it to be published on Wednesday, and the thought was that typically we weren't receiving the agenda items or the full agenda until sometimes Thursday evening, even on occasion on a Friday. And so, the idea was, let's push it back to Wednesday, that gives us more time to digest it, make phone calls, and look into things. What is sort of your thought process, again, for?
Okay.
Having even a less day, where maybe we're not getting it until Friday now?
Well, we're not going to get it on Friday. The city manager has assured us, we're getting it by noon on, on Thursday. If staff has some other product to put in the agenda, it's going to get kicked to the following time. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. So, plain and simple, the city manager's guaranteed me that it will go out at noon on Thursday, and if that's the case, I'm good with that. It was just a way, because of the volume of these, these things, it's obvious that they were having a hard time meeting the Wednesday schedule, and this just gives them all day Wednesday. You're, you're right, it came out late on Wednesday night sometimes, it came out Thursday, but this way, it gives them the time, and the city manager says, this is what he needs to make it work, and I'm, I want to give him a chance to do that.
I'm good with that. I mean, granted, most of the really late ones were with a prior city manager, things have been much better, but I guess it comes down to setting a hard, fast deadline and not keep pushing it. If it's not in by such and such time, then it waits till the next meeting.
All I can say is, if it doesn't come out on Thursday, you'll hear from me. Okay.
As it stands now, is that, or did it say Wednesday noon, or what was the existing ordinance? Just Wednesday?
Well, initially, it was Wednesday, and then you amended it to Thursday. Now, we're putting it back to Thursday. Thursday at noon. If you approve the motion, yes.
Okay. Thank you for explaining.
Okay, so I got a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion? We're just kind of doing a redo, is all. All right, let's vote. Everybody over there on that side of the room smiling, eyes avid, so moved.
Okay, moving along, mayor. Lance, you mentioned about the spreadsheet, and the spreadsheet, first of all, it's great to get that information, thank you, but under your item, I was reviewing this when we got it on Friday, under your item number five, that has to do with us requesting more funds from the TDC, okay, to work on that project. And the update, I just want to discuss that, and the reason I'm doing it publicly, because I know this is Dr. Ramswell's baby on this one, in a sense, she got the ball rolling with the extra money. But on 11720, the update says need legal opinion. Well, on, I don't think we do, because on September the 6th, Kyle sent out an email basically giving us the legal opinion from the county, so I don't think we need that.
He's correct. We did get the email from Lynn Hari.
However you say it.
Yeah, pardon. I almost said Hiroshima, and I know that's not it. And then also, when the county commissioners came to the meeting, they actually verified that.
So, I don't, so I don't think we need that. We just need to move forward, and we can discuss that later on, but that, I don't think we need the legal aspect.
Very good. We'll make sure the application is submitted in conjunction with the sheriff's office.
Okay. Next item. Last week, so we had an item in our mailbox, all the council and the mayor, and it was from ISO. It was a large packet, that's the Insurance Service Office, and I've gotten some information, which is extremely troubling, and it's going to impact everybody in the City of Destin. For those that don't know, ISO, and I'm giving you the best I can describe it, it's an organization that, that basically goes into all communities, and most communities in the nation, and they study three, they, they study three areas. They studied the fire department, they studied the 9/11, and they studied the water department. And with those three components, they come up with an ISO rating. That ISO rating impacts your insurance, period. Insurance companies use that rating. We, Destin, have been very lucky to have a very good rating. When I looked at this, I was very troubled, because what it's saying is, is that basically they're changing our great, our rating and making it worse, okay? And I was trying to understand why. I contacted those people. This letter is misleading in a couple of ways, because it thanks us for taking part in this thing, and we don't have any horse in this race. It has nothing to do with the city. But basically, I contacted, I tried to reach out to the fire chief and didn't have any luck getting him, and I talked to a fire commissioner. And basically, I was informed that last year, when things had to tighten up with the fire department, and they had to do some belt tightening, they had, they had basically not hired or let go or retired six firefighters. So, the number of firefighters in Destin decreased, and as a result of that, that's how we failed, we being a city, from ISO rating. So, effective April the 1st, our rating is going to retrogress, and the bottom line is, is that, what that means to every resident of Destin, there's nothing we can do about it, number one, but what that means to residents of Destin, that it gives the insurance companies the potential to raise your insurance rate. This has nothing to do with the city, it's nothing that the staff did, but it's just, it's something that happened with the fire department, it's out of our control. The fire department has subsequently rehired those people, but it's going to take another year for them to come back out with another ISO ranking. So, for a year, we are potentially looking at each and every one of us homeowners here, our insurance rate's going up, and I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Again, it has nothing to do with the city, but it impacts all of us, and there's a strong chance we'll all get phone calls from our constituents, and I wanted to make everybody aware of that. and I wanted to make everybody aware of that. It is what it is. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. And the last thing, I just wanted to make an apology. The last council meeting, as you know, we had a pretty healthy discussion regarding the audit. And that's something that it's a work in progress. And I incorrectly made a statement, I just want to correct that, when I said seven weeks had gone by and nothing had been done. That wasn't correct. There were a few items, I don't have to go into details, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that I misspoke, and that there were a couple of items made. And I don't like saying something that's not right. I just wanted to clear it up. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Mr. Overdare. Mr. Marler.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the agenda item to be put back on for discussing parking garages. We've had some interesting convo, going back and forth with voices and stuff about parking for employees, parking for this, parking for that. I don't care how you slice it, there's not enough adequate parking, even if every business that's on the harbor were following the parking issue, following what was asked of in their development orders when they were built. We don't have enough adequate parking, simply because we have more people than we've ever had before. And we're still, we're still looking at just a few parking lots and not looking at the whole picture. I'm glad Mr. Darden is here tonight on that with the parking garages, since he had discussed it with us at council before. We've had discussions over the fact that we're, this, all it's going to do is harbor employees from the various complexes around. Well, that's fine. We're still getting money out of the deal. Somebody's got to pay the $5 parking fee, or we can change the parking fee at a later date. We do not have enough adequate parking on the harbor, and that's all there is to that. Parking garages are going to have to come in sooner or later. I would rather do it sooner than later, simply because I think we can work out a deal with somebody. It's a public-private partnership, as I've said before. I just want us to actually, try to come back and revisit this as soon as possible, simply because I think we're missing the boat because of the way things are going. I, it's, there is the controversy that, you know, where I work, that we're allowing our employees to come over there, but somebody's paying for it. So, they're not, it's not a free ride. But I don't think any of the restaurants along the harbor, or any of the other businesses along the harbor, have adequate parking for the number of tourists that we get per, each year in this area. And everybody's, it actually works in with short-term rentals, because everybody wants to bring their vehicle with them. I mean, even if there is a whole big party, it's going to be two or three SUVs instead of one big giant bus. So, I would like, I would like the council's consensus, or I'll make a motion, whichever it is, that we go back and we actually revisit this, seriously revisit the parking garage issue. We have several areas. We've acquired some more land on Stallman to add to our parking lot, parking lot down there. We already have a paved parking lot at Marler and 98. That would be the perfect area, already partially ready to go, that we could go up with the parking garage. And that's basically what I've had in mind. And I think we need to do it, you know, before we get to a point where we're going to run into a lot of issues with moratoriums on building and parking, because I don't, although there's not very much to build out left on the harbor, I think it's not fair that we, we're not looking at it because we're looking at one particular property or another particular property that might be using that parking. I think, I think the tourist industry is bringing more of that in also. And along with that effect, maybe it would change the way that our paid parking ordinance works at the present time. And basically, that's all I'm asking, is for the council to consider reconsidering this, let's go in back and looking at parking garages.
Do you want to do it in a motion form, or you just want to have a discussion?
Well, I can do it in a motion form. I make a motion that we come back and revisit the parking garage issue as soon as we possibly can. And I would like to include Mr. Darden's company back with it again, as they were consulting with us.
Yeah, I think, I think we selected them as part of that RFP proposal, so they're, we wouldn't have to do that a second time, correct?
I would need to look at that agreement.
Okay, we will. We'll just leave that one alone for the moment. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Braden.
I really think it's going to be a tough sell for the community to basically build the immigrant parking garage. And that's what we're doing. I mean, the employees there get a letter, I've seen them, that they're not allowed to park on property. They park somewhere else. They don't care where, just don't park on property. They've been told if they park on property, it could be a career-altering decision. So, I mean, I just really, I really think it's going to be a tough sell for the citizens to go into a private partnership or not, to build immigrant parking garage. That's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Overdare.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Rodney. I mean, I don't think we need to be building it for people on the south side of 98. But, I mean, it's a problem. And whether we helped create it or not, doesn't matter who created it, it's our problem now. And nobody else is going to be able to fix it but us. And so, if we don't look at this and do something about it, it's never going to get, it's never going to get any better. So, I would encourage us to at least just look at it and see if we can come up with some kind of a solution. And if it winds up being a public-private partnership, you know, all those properties on the south side of 98 are private, they can chip in as well. So, we might be able to get some buy-in from them as well. So, it might be some kind of a solution.
Ms. Ramswell?
I'd like to ask staff how often we had to display a lot as full sign at the Marler parking lot and the parking lots over off Stallman.
I personally never seen that. I've seen it nearing capacity on 4th of July week and those types of events. But I don't know that, I personally have never seen it 100%.
And that's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Destin?
How much more capacity from a parking space standpoint did we just put in when we acquired, when we acquired the middle lot on Cybert?
Thirty-two.
About 40 spaces, I believe.
Okay. I'm echoing the sentiments of Mr. Braden, and I do understand that there is a general problem. But I don't think it's ripe for parking garages right now. I tend to agree with Mrs. Ramswell. Let's see how the next season goes with regards to our expanded Cybert lot, and then revisit this when it's time.
Mr. Marler.
Try to put this where I don't want to offend anybody, but the mindset of Mr. Braden is exactly the reason that we need to look at it. It is not just that particular property. There are other properties that are doing the same identical thing and having their employees park in our city parking lots. But our city coffers are still getting the payments. It doesn't matter who or what. And it's not just employees. We have customers that are having to park across the street also, because the parking lot is full. So, that's exactly my point. The mindset is, you're trying to build a parking garage for a particular business. No, we're not. We're trying to build parking garages for the tourism industry and our locals that want to park as close as they can to the harbor. It's not all about a business or a particular property. Everybody is suffering, and everybody can benefit from this, from the parking garages. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get through, is it's, the mindset is that where you're doing it for a particular property, and that's not the right thing, because that's just the wrong way to look at it.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, ma'am. I think the question Dr. Ramswell asked, and the answer was, was pretty important. If we had no vacancy on these parking lots all the time, then we might be able to justify spending this money. But we got to look into this, back to our vision session and our priorities. And again, we don't have a money tree. So, where is our money best served? Okay? And it might be based on what council member Destin just said and Dr. Ramswell, it might suit us well to wait and see how this year goes, to spend the money, okay, to do anything. Right now, we're looking at underground and utilities. We're looking at beachfront property. We only have so much money. And to spend money on this, my thought would be to at least wait till this season's over with. If our parking lots were all full, then I think we'd be having a different discussion. But when we have spaces available, you know, people have to start using it, okay? They want a parking lot, start filling up our parking lot. That's the way we could justify it.
Thank you. Okay, keep going here. Mr. Braden.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Marler. None of the businesses on the harbor that have built adequate parking for their businesses are suffering at all. And like other council members have said, the parking that we've got on Cybert, one of the parking lots, I've yet to see a vehicle in it. So, we have, we have plenty of parking down there as it is. Again, I just don't know how we would build a parking garage when we're not even filling up our parking lots. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I think once we make some improvements to the Cybert or Stallman intersection, some pedestrian improvements, I think the time would probably be better. But, yeah, until these parking lots, you know, and I understand the parking issue on the harbor, but, you know, they make a great point, you know. Our lots currently aren't at capacity. So, I can't imagine you build a parking garage and you'll drive more demand for parking if they're not using what's there now. But, you know, there are businesses on the harbor that have gone to great lengths to buy private property to park their employees and their customers. And I would encourage any harbor business owner that did not plan properly for the parking of their business to seek out private property and do things old-fashioned way, because government can't solve all your problems for you.
All right.
I've got one last comment. We don't have any areas near most of the businesses that are zoned for parking garages. If they're willing, if we're willing to look at changing the zoning, I'm sure that several people would build their own parking garage. But none of these properties are zoned for parking garages.
Nor has anyone brought forward a request to change zoning for such a venture.
Call the question, Mayor.
Seeing no further discussion, let's take a vote. I knows have it so moved. All right, let's move on. Mr. Destin?
Mayor, other than Lance, would you do me the favor? Can you call Mr. Coffey and find out where the RFP sits and review? I don't want it languishing over at the county too long. We got to get this ball rolling. Thanks.
All right. Normally, I say all I'm going to say during the meeting, but tonight, I got a few...
Mayor, I got...
Oh, Mr. Morgan?
Sorry.
All right, got you. Your food for thought threw me, has already erased you.
Yeah, I walked on nominating Mr. James Gepin to the local planning agency.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Around here, if you get nominated, you get elected. See, no further discussion.
And... Thank you.
The vote is unanimous. Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
Ray, for the next agenda, I would like to place the Lake Coleman Dam, the Lake Coleman Dam on the agenda, and have city staff draw up the report. I saw it in the tracking notes that y'all emailed us where we were with it. But just so we can have some input from the Lake Coleman people and the council, and we can come to a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Well, we're beginning of a new decade. I still keep forgetting to put 2020 when I'm writing documents. This council can leave a really incredible mark on the city of Destin in future. I want to encourage this council, they've already done a bunch of things that have been very visionary and very forward-thinking. I want to encourage that you guys keep doing it. In spite of the discussion about parking garages, I think everybody agrees that when there's a recognizable need, that they'll address the situation at that time. I think we got a lot of redevelopment that needs to take place, probably between Mountain Drive and 98, before we tackle that in earnest. But we still do have parking issues, and we may need to take a look at those after we see what our parking lots do. But we're on a path of big plans and improvements here, starting this decade, as a council, myself as mayor. We've got the new comp plan. Hopefully soon, LDC will be brought up to SNF. We got an entirely new way that the Destin city government's going to operate in a paperless type of system that's going to enhance doing business with the city. We got plans to underground utilities, not just on 98, but the entire city. We're thinking big. Six-laning of Highway 98 is taking place. We're talking about tonight, just fixing our interchanges. We're going to finish the connector, a two-lane connector, hopefully, here soon. We've got big dreams, me and Webb do anyways, on acquiring public beach parks for our community. And today, the team came in and gave us some ideas on a new community, a Destin Community Events Center. And I just want to take all these things, this is, these are all big dreams and big visions, but every single one of them is not just for today, and it's not even for five years from now. Some of the things we're talking about doing are going to enhance this community for 20, 30, 40 years. It's big stuff. Building a new community center and bringing it to our town center is in direct timing with our new high school. It's in direct timing with wanting to encourage redevelopment along 98 and in our town center itself. When you, when you, when you build these kind of things and do these kind of things, it encourages people to come in here and want to spend money to enhance your overall community. In fact, it also enhances our personal property values, even if you live two miles from some of these projects, because it's going to make Destin even more attractive place to raise your children or to retire. So, I just want to encourage everyone to think big, keep doing what you're doing. I'm 63, and I don't know how much ice time I got left in me, so I'd like to see a rink built really fast. But more importantly, I'd like to see something that we continue doing things that are good for our community. And so, I'm looking forward to further discussions of a new Destin Community Events Center located in the center of Destin's community. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. We already talked about my first item, which was just to announce the mediation for Point Mezzanine litigation is on February 5. And as we discussed, you will hear from the attorneys after the mediation is held with an update. The second item is just a quick briefing on the proposed pending legislation at the state level dealing with short-term rentals. It's Senate Bill 1128 and identical House Bill 1011. They're currently pending in committee. The bills would preempt all regulation of vacation rentals to the state, including inspection and licensing. The only regulations that would be permitted would be those that apply uniformly to all residential properties. So, basically, any regulations enacted before 2011 would be the ones that are exempt, but everything else would be preempted. And that has not been, you know, anything finalized at this point, so we'll keep you posted.
And Kim, to that effect, being part of the League of Cities and the League of Mayors, I've been getting a lot of solicitation to weigh in, for the city to weigh in on these issues of home rule. And what I would like to do is, is ask if I could get council approval, maybe myself and the city manager to write a letter in opposition of this proposed bill. I think our city and our council and our code enforcement have done a real good job addressing this situation. And I'd sure hate to be dictated by the state and take that local control away. So, they would like for us to, because all this stuff is in committee right now, it's basically begin the process of politicking or lobbying for them not to be in favor of it. Mel Ponder reached out to me yesterday and told me he's not in favor of this bill, and that he's, you know, he believes that the city of Destin should have local control over ordinances of this matter. So, I just, your thoughts and your ideas, Ms. Ramswell?
Thanks. So, last year, I had put together that PowerPoint for council and presented it to a couple of different folks, including the Florida League of Cities, and then they passed it on to several different committees. and then they passed it on to several different committees, different senators and representatives, as the bill last year went through. Of course, it was defeated last year. They brought it back. They brought it back early and quick. So I will say that the House bill today did pass in the Workforce Development and Tourism Committee. Next up, it goes to Government Operations and Technical Appropriations. And then, right now, the Senate bill is in Commerce and Tourism. That's going to be a hard one to win. But I think that we've got a good shot winning in the House with the next committee, but we've got to stay on them. I've already been emailing the different legislatures and talking with some of the representatives of League of Cities. They're very active in opposing these bills because, as you mentioned, it does take away home rule, which is the whole point of allowing us to govern our own cities as we see fit. So it is very important. Last year, we did write a letter, so I'm sure we've got a copy of that somewhere on file that could be sort of not recycled, but used as a template for something else to do.
Yeah, I just didn't want to take the liberty on my own accord.
No, absolutely not. I'm glad you brought that up.
To write as mayor of the city of Destin without y'all's consent or approval. Ms. Cobb?
Another suggestion, the letter is one option, but we could also bring a resolution back to council on February 3rd for you to all approve jointly, and you can sign off on it. That would, we've done that before.
That's what we did last year. You're right.
And we can then direct the city clerk to forward that to the appropriate entities, to the state and to the league and all of these.
But the session's in right now, and a lot of these, like Ms. Ramswell just said, it's went through committee today, it's going to another one tomorrow, so it's happening really fast. In two weeks, it may already be to the floor. I'm not exactly sure what the timing is on the session.
Why don't we just do a motion that instructs you to work off the template that we've used in the past? Send that out, and then instruct staff and the land use attorney to, and whomever in staff also needs to assist, to bring us back a resolution prepared so that we can send it. Because I do agree that there's a timing sort of constraint. We want at least our voice to be preliminary heard because it is being digested right now in the sausage-making process that is the creation of legislation. But it's important that they at least hear our opinion.
Second.
Preliminary.
Okay, so we got a motion. Second. Any further discussion on this?
I would just say that we are all more than welcome to email on our own. The more emails they see that are, you know, opposing this, the better, and the more voices. And we are one of the cities, last year I was asked to be on a TV show out there. This is so important that that word gets out. We are one of the major cities that will be significantly impacted. And so they do look to us to help set that precedent and that position.
Yeah, I think a letter will suffice Mel's request and that of Senator Gainer, so they have something in hand right now, like by tomorrow. And then we can do the resolution just to kind of back up what the letter says at a later date, okay? So we got a motion, got a second?
Are there any cities that oppose home rule?
Yes, a lot of the bigger ones that are huge in tourism, I think Orlando is one. I'm not sure that they oppose it, but they stay silent while the lobbyists for Disney and tourism and such spend a fortune with their lobbyists to oppose.
Yeah.
That's why it keeps coming up.
The legislature has a Mickey Mouse problem. It's definitely overrun by their lobbyists, and so they can give anything they want. It tends to come into conflict with municipal Orlando and what people really want who live there. So they find that they're more effective in getting what they want at the legislative level.
It wouldn't be where it is today if there wasn't people that supported those efforts. Okay, all right. We got a motion, got a second? Take a vote. Eyes have it. Lance, you and I will get together this morning, formulate that. Last but not, oh, is that all you have, Kim? Okay. Got that one scratched off. Last, but definitely not the least, our city attorney, Mr. Bubman.
I appreciate that sentiment, Mayor. I just have one item for y'all tonight. As you know, we moved the election day from March to November. As part of that, it turns out, we are actually going to save approximately $9,500 once every four years. This is because the county has elected to absorb the cost of our elections since it is conducted in conjunction with the countywide election on the same day. In addition, the county has offered two add-on options to the city. The first one is the supervisor will administer all legally required advertisements at cost to the city. So Paul will pay upfront, and then the city will reimburse Mr. Lux for that expense. The second is that Mr. Lux's office will administer all candidate qualifying and campaign finance filings for a flat fee of $500. We're recommending that the city exercise both those options and have Mr. Lux's office continue to conduct these functions.
Do you need a motion to that effect, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Destin, I saw your reach.
I'm going to move that we instruct staff to get into an agreement with Mr. Lux's office with both options and continue to allow the supervisor to run, administer the elections and the qualifying and, I guess, maintenance of the campaign contributions and reporting.
Hey, got a motion. Do I have a second? We've got a second, Mr. Braden. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved. Now for the second most important part of our meeting. Public comments again on any of the things that were discussed tonight. Do I have any takers? Anyone that would like to make any further comments tonight? All right, this is your last chance. Meeting adjourned.